Did Kate say anything about whether she was gonna come or not?
No, she's not.
Oh, she's not?
Yep. She has a work obligation.
Oh, well, that can happen. Okay, well.
We have court. Okay.
You, we up on the?
We're up.
Okay. Good evening, folks. I'm gonna call the Bath Planning Commission meeting to get order. It's February the, uh?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? It's, uh, six oh one, I think. Everybody read the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda?
Did you wanna add?
Yeah, I wanna discuss, uh, the April eighth date, which is a Monday. Uh, normally, we would be eating on the ninth, which is a Tuesday. The, uh, the Recreation Committee would like to have a joint meeting, but they'd like to hold it on Monday in their timeframe. So, it's, it's a long ways away. It's April eighth, but I would like to talk about it.
Do it kind of new, new business?
Yeah, we'll put that on our new business.
Item D?
Uh, let's do a D. Good, George. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is it, can we get an approval for the agenda with those changes?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody object? Thank you. Is there any disclosure of interest conflicts? Well, hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, general public, if you have an item you wanna talk about on the agenda as far as the school goes, we're gonna discuss that as part of new business. So, we'll open the meeting to the public at that point. But if you have anything else you'd like to talk about, now's the time to express that. Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Minutes from the January twenty-third regular meeting. Everybody get a chance to look those over?
Yes, I did.
I move to be approved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded by both races. Uh, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Thank you, gentlemen. Miles, correspondence from Eaton County?
Yeah, so, uh, it's included in the packet, but, uh, Eaton County, uh, sent us a letter addressed to the Planning Commission for their intent to conduct master planning. Just kinda interesting side note about this, uh, I was surprised to find that Eaton County had not done a master plan in quite some time. So, uh, this will be kind of a fresh new start for them, so probably an in-depth process. So, if you wanna be involved, uh, it's happening.
Thank you. Okay, old business, the sidewalk ordinance.
All right, um, yeah, so, uh, we've, again, introduced the sidewalk ordinance a number of times. Basically, tonight, we're hoping for some action be taken on this ordinance. We thought we cleaned up a lot of, uh, the issues on it. I don't know if there's so much issue. It's just an ordinance that obviously is, i- it's political 'cause it's sidewalks and it's gonna impact people in real life. And, uh, you know, there's externalities that get created through something, uh, implementation like that. So, we've tried to address those and what, uh, the Planning Commission Board input everyone sees as the best and most fair way possible. Uh, we removed, so just to recap, some of the more fundamental things that we've tried to adjust, um, we removed that table that basically separated out when the Planning Commission would step in and when the Board of Trustees would step in to make it pretty much an administrative process across the board where, uh, through administrative staff here, we will determine if it's something's onto compliance, just like we do with the mowing of grass, for example. And then we'll just take that process over, uh, starting with, uh, communications to the landowner. Your sidewalk's on compliance, you're required to bring it up to compliance. Uh, failure to do so within a time period that's specified in the ordinance will result in us doing the work and we will assess it to your taxes to be paid over five years. Um, which is a very standard process. Uh, the only thing that's not standard about it is the five-year piece. We, uh, it is something that's used in other municipalities, but by no means is it required. We went down that path to try to, uh, not make it overly burdensome to the public. I know as a landowner, if I got some ten thousand dollar, uh, bill on my taxes, I would not be too happy. So, this, like, eases it out to be paid over time. So, it's almost like an in-kind loan that we're giving to the landowner as a municipality and then letting them pay us back interest-free. So, we feel like it's as fair of a deal as can reason be expected. Um, another thing is there's a large discussion about, uh, what, what if the Board would like to step in? One example that Kate was emailing me about, 'cause she kinda be here tonight, um, and Kate Hagerman, for everybody to know, she's the Planning Commission's representative, uh, to the Board of Trustees. So, she's an elected member. Um, she was saying, "Well, what if we get like a Safe Road to School grant? Like, is that gonna be covered under our ordinance? Are we prevented from doing anything?" I said, "No," because if everyone remembers, it was debated last time if we should have some language in there of like, basically, the Board can't do anything at any time for any reason. And that's a really simplified way of what we, we-
Right.
We fancied that up a little bit, but, um, we did put that language in there. So, like, if, uh, Safe Road to School grant comes in, we, uh, maintain our authority to come in and fix all the sidewalks for people, which we're undertaking this year. Um, that's another thing for the audience. We're not trying to spring this on people with the sidewalks up in case you happen to have sidewalks in front of your house. The township is through a series of grants, state, federal funds, and then some of our own revenue, uh, trying to bring all the sidewalks township-wide up to a hundred percent compliance this year at cost to us, creating a clean slate program and then educating people about these new rules that we're discussing. Um, and then finally, uh, with the help of Ray, and very much Ray, uh, Mr. Severie here, appreciate you for, uh, the guidance on the engineering side of things. That's obviously outside of our scope as planners. Um, we worked to get language in there that I think meets all your standards. We talked a lot about tool joints, and I know I've learned a lot about compaction joints versus extraction or expansion joints. Um, I think that is all in there and appropriately placed at this point. So, yeah, we feel like we've done a lot of work here. We feel like we got a good ordinance. I can never, with any ordinance, we talk about, say, like, we're a hundred percent good to go and there will never be an issue.
No.
But if there is some kind of overarching issue in implementation, we'd of course bring it back and amend it at that point.
Right.
Mostly because it's gonna affect us as staff the most. If something's not working correctly, we're gonna be the ones that are gonna have the heartache.
That is correct.
So, um, yeah, so we feel good about it. So, if you guys feel good about it, um, you know, I guess we're requesting that we can get this to the Board.
I got a couple of wording, wording things.
Okay.
On section fifty-eight thirty-one. The last one, you've got definitely a trail. I don't know if we need that definite trail. It's okay to have it here, but-
Yeah, I think it's just okay to have it there.
Okay, on the last, the last line, there's one word that needs to change.
Okay.
You've got natural environment or corridor, this is not, it should be that is not classified as an-
Great. Uh, that's a great, thanks. Thank you for that.
The other one is on fif- the next page, fifty-eight thirty-four, C. You say the minimum width should be five feet in width. I think you gotta put that in width after the ten feet, the next sentence also.
Okay. After the ten feet on the next sentence, in width?
Yeah, so just ten feet in width, yeah.
Okay.
Just to make it clear what we're talking about.
That's in C?
Hang on, Lexi, you want to get some notes real quick? All right, hang on real quick, Ray, before Lexi's gonna get, she's gonna be the one helping me with these edits.
It's my job.
I've turned the editing of this over to Lexi, 'cause we've just been doing it so much.
Good plan.
I got one more simple one, sure.
What's the piece, insulation sort of?
Yeah, so he's saying that we said in width for the five-foot section here. And we should also put in width behind the ten-foot section.
Okay.
That was, uh, fifty-eight thirty-four C, you said?
C, yes.
Right there, second line, ten, right behind ten foot.
The next one's, and more of a question than anything else, I guess, is on, uh, what section is this?
Fifty-seven?
Fifty-eight thirty-five, four, after all the pictures?
Okay.
You've got, "In the event of significant snow or ice event, an additional forty-eight hours shall be allowed." Should that "shall" be changed to "may"? So, do we have to do it?
I, I don't know. I mean, that's a good question. Uh, there's pros and cons. So, like, the "shall" could reinforce the public. I- it could present to the public, like, that, hey, we're working in good faith with you.
Yeah, it's just a-
May feels like then we had the opportunity to be like, "Oh, no, you know, actually, you, you specific landowner, you only get twenty-four hours."
We don't like you much, so.
Yeah, and so that's why I like, I like the "shall."
"Shall" is fine.
Yeah.
The last comment on that part is way back in fifty-eight thirty-nine, no, no, chapter thirty-one.
Fifty-eight thirty-one?
In, uh, chapter thirty-one, which is next to the last page.
Okay.
Under L, you added L in there?
Yep.
Five-foot right of the sidewalk, if the Board of Trustees, uh, Plankhurst, determine that no sidewalks are required to be established, you can just add at the end of that, "at the time of development." 'Cause if we just say they're not required, then why do we need easement?
What about at the time of?
At the time of something, yeah, some-
Yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying. It can't be at the time of approval, 'cause they won't have the easement language drawn up yet. How about at the time of C of O being granted, or prior to C of O?
Yeah, that's fine. Just, just something to clarify what we're talking about.
Yeah, prior to C of O.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the best time to handle it.
Those are my simple comments.
That's a, that's a good catch. I mean, i- it's a clarifying statement.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Yeah.
That's my simple comment. I got one.
You got one complex one for us?
More complex. Section fifty-eight thirty-three.
Fifty-eight thirty-three, okay. A B or?
Yeah, and then compare that with fifty-eight thirty, which now is fifty-eight thirty-six. Fifty-eight thirty-six really tells us what we can do as far as, you know, if, if somebody, if a zoning administrator or, or code enforcement officer determines it's a necessary public improvement to repair or reconstruct sidewalks, this is the process.
Okay.
And the only difference between B and C is the two parcels or less and the sixty-day versus twenty-day timeframe.
It's all, it's, um-
And I don't know if we-
No, we need bo- we need both. We got that out of our ordinances, 'cause it also covers the difference between repair and maintenance. That's the big difference between those two.
Does it both start with the same thing, though?
Yeah, it's essentially the same thing. One is just detailing the process for repair and one's detailing the process for maintenance.
Yeah.
Why do we have the twenty, uh, the twenty days as opposed to sixty days? Because that's, well, not, it's not-
Because we thought a repair would take less time than establishing new.
So, C is just repair?
Yep.
Then how about taking the two parcels or less out of that?
We could take the two parcels or less.
And that doesn't make sense to, any restriction on that.
Yeah.
What if we've got?
No, that's fair.
I- 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 in twenty, in ten years, we've got all these new sides we've put in.
Yeah.
Twenty percent of them need repairs.
Yeah.
It's not two parcels. I, I just take two.
Yeah, just take it out.
Just take it, yeah. Okay, I didn't catch that. That, once for construction?
Yeah, once for, uh-
Right.
Maintenance and once for construction, so establishing new.
Let's see, it require the maintenance. Well, the first one that says maintenance, again, it should be construction.
Both of them say maintenance.
Yeah, both of them say maintenance.
Well, that's a oversight. One should say construction.
So, B should say, B should say construction.
Yeah, the one with the longer timeline should say construction.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll remove the two years and we'll add, uh, B will be construction.
And then now we've gone over that, do we really need the section before that?
Which section is that?
It says a zoning admin- that's the Administration Enforcement Authority Township Board?
Yeah, we need that. That is, again, it's, it's a clarifying statement.
It's really duplicate.
Yeah, but it lets everyone know what their roles and responsibilities are. That's more one, like, if we get in court and the Board wants to take some action, we can say it's right there in the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
There's no downside to it. I agree. It's like, are we duplicating things? Yes. Is there a downside to it? But no.
Okay, then stick a comma in one place then. Under A, after construction, it needs to be a comma in there.
Okay.
Construction, comma, or maintenance. Or construction, repair, comma, repair.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, even, even with, there's probably like five edits that we discussed in there. I feel like we can get all those done and still get approval.
I just have a question, Miles. Uh, I'm on page six, uh, C is near the top where we talked about the pay. Did you talk to the treasurer about this? Because, uh-
Yeah, I did talk about how it gets implemented. This is standard for them.
Right, I know it is, but is there gonna be a contract then between the property owner and the township?
If they take on the work?
Yes.
No, we would just inspect that the work was done correctly. Now, if we take on the work, we'll just implement it. They won't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
I guess the question really is, the state, since we're doing this like this, is there anything that says that we, the township has a public hearing?
No.
To implement this assessment on people?
No.
Oh.
It's a standard language in a lot of municipalities.
Okay, the place I worked before, we always had a public hearing, because we were doing large projects.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it depends on the scope of the project.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it, there, there would be if it, we were doing like a whole street, yeah.
I have a question on the, on the five-year thing. Do we wanna put any kind of a dollar limit? In other words, if your assessment's less than a thousand bucks, you gotta pay in a year or-
I don't, 'cause then it just complicates it.
Yeah, I don't think so.
If somebody's got a five hundred dollar assessment, we're gonna pay-
They can always have that choice.
Well, they can pay, they can pay it upfront, but for the township concerned, we're, we're stretching it up to five years for a hundred dollars a year, which seems to me kinda-
No, well, it would, it'd be dumb, but if they wanna go that route, they can go that route. And if they don't pay their taxes, then, you know, they, the normal process happens.
I'm just trying to cut down work for the township to do.
At this, it'll be, it'll be easier. I, I agree with what you're saying, Ray, but I think it'll be easier to have one, one way all the time.
Oh, I agree totally, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so we got about, again, about five edits in there.
Um, so I, I will move to accept with edits, so that we can get this on the table.
I'd support, I'd support that.
Move to the seconded? Any further discussion?
You got the-
Um, let's do a roll call. And I know there's really no money involved, but it is an ordinance.
Okay.
Those in favor of moving it to the Township Board, would you do a roll call, Lexi?
Yeah, I can do, uh-
Miles?
Yep, Commissioner Cockey?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Wright?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner-
Crainer.
Crainer?
Yes.
Sorry, and Commissioner Severie?
Yes.
And sorry, it should be Vice Chair, Cockey. Sorry about that.
Any title I can get.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, that's one step closer to completion on that one.
Yeah, we got that off.
I think that's the most difficult ordinance we've had, isn't it, Miles?
Yeah, it's a big one.
Comprehensive, I should say.
So, the next item, gentlemen, is the final review of the Non-Motorized Plan, Chapter Four. Only Chapter Four, so.
Yeah, and if-
Miles, you wanna lead us into this?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, quick, I'm not gonna read everything here. I mean, this has been in the packet before. Always one dough. You guys should be able to take a last look at this before we providing feedback to Williams and Works. I know I did get some edits from Mr. Severie, and I reshared those with Williams and Works, and I think they're already implementing those. You won't see those here reflected tonight.
Okay, that's 'cause I had the same comments.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, so I wanted to say that right out of the gate. So, they've got them, they're working on it. Where you will see those edits made or any additional edits or feedback that we get tonight, of course, you can always just e- This doesn't require a vote. You can just email me your thoughts at any point in time. I'll share them to them.
There's a typo I can see.
Okay, yeah, and it, it could have been covered by what Ray found, um, but e- either way, email it to me. Um, the plan with Williams and Works is, just so everyone knows, they are making edits on this. They are bringing the full draft forward at some meeting in March to be determined by them. They're still trying to figure out their schedule. Uh, they will be here in person to ver- uh, present said plan, and then we'll be getting you guys' feedback in person that day.
So, they're gonna be here for a Planning Commission meeting or?
They'll be here for a-
Public meeting?
A Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, we don't know which meeting here, the first or second in March, and obviously you'll, you'll approve the agenda. But, um, whatever their availability is, and then they'll not only have Chapter Four with all the edits made, but then they'll present the rest of the draft to you gentlemen.
Okay.
And be looking for feedback, of course. And so then they'll take that, all the thoughts back, clean up the edit, and then we'll be bringing it back for, you know, final review, final review, and then possibly moving to the Board. Even though I think there is one step between that draft and getting it to the Board. There's amendments and other data that have to be added into the plan.
So, there's no plan for another public meeting that might take?
Oh, no, any more public hearing, no. So, they, in terms of the communication, just so everyone's aware, that went into this plan and working with the public, uh, we did two events where we went out to where the public was, so one at the farmer's market and one at the summer solstice event. We did, um, one public hearing at the Planning Commission where the public was invited here to give comments. And then we did that one work session, too, where we kinda had tables set up as a more kinda interactive, uh, feedback. So, we've kind of, not only met but exceeded our requirements of public input for this plan as we typically try to do.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a lot of work, honestly.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
Looks like they've hit it, not at all.
Nope, okay.
And, and Ray, if you don't see all your edits reflected, and when they come to present, then we can let them know at that time.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to new business, the Sundials Farmstead School. Miles, you wanna give us an introduction?
Yeah, I'll just give you the quick, uh, Planning Department take on this one. Obviously, we're here tonight for a preliminary introduction, uh, which means no action can be taken. Uh, that's mostly due to the fact that we don't have a full set of plans yet, um, and we haven't conducted a full agency review, so we haven't done our due diligence to ensure that, like, all neighboring properties won't be negatively impacted by this development. Um, so far, though, in my opinion, I would've worked with the developers on the pre-application side, and they seem like they're working in good faith with the township, so that's always nice when we can work well with somebody. They're local, you know, and so that's nice, too. They've owned the property for a while. They, they might talk a little bit today about how exactly they're transferring that to five oh one C three. That's really their business, so it's got nothing really to do with the land use side of it. Um, kinda the notable, uh, land use, uh, elements that are going on here. I'll go ahead and switch over to fetch GIS. So, this is State Road here to the north. Um, we got this, uh, what's the name of this golf course?
Timber Ridge.
Timber Ridge, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Timber Ridge Golf Course, very nice golf course, very, we appreciate them being in Bath. Um, uh, so they're adjacent here on the south side. There's two residential land uses, uh, flanking them on either side, east and west. Kind of an agricultural use slash residential across the street. So, that's kinda the makeup of what's going on in that area. Uh, this is a zone, i- including the neighboring properties, as low-density residential. I'll make sure I'm not wrong there. I'm not. Um, and so there's no change in, uh, zoning district around them. I think the golf course might be zoned, something different?
It's recreational, probably.
Yeah, it's medium, so it actually steps up to a more intense land use. So, there is not, there, there's not significant buffering required, although their natural impediment on this site would provide more buffering than we would ever require, which is quite wet in the rear of the site. Um, they'll talk about their efforts, uh, to mitigate any impacts of these properties, and we'll see if there's some property owners here that, uh, maybe can provide information. I don't know about what they think. Um, and this is a use allowed by right in the low-density residential. Any kind of insta- educational institution is a by-right land use. Uh, what's important for the Planning Commission members to know is, basically, what that means for us is if zoning can be met, um, you know, it's important to get a vote that reflects that zoning is met and then it limits, uh, the conditions that can be placed on the site. That's not to say no conditions can be placed, they just have to be within reason, within the scope of a by-right land use. So, yeah, it's kinda the planning take, and, uh, kinda the whole point of tonight, and I think we've discussed this with the developers, seeking, uh, this project, but just so everyone's aware, is, you know, it costs a lot of money to develop these plans anywhere, you know, these days from two thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on how complicated they can get. And, uh, one thing we like to do in Bath Township that's a little bit different is bring people in for an introduction, let the Planning Commission, through their expertise of reviewing these, which they do several a year at this point, um, provide feedback to the developers, so they can internalize that and take that to their, uh, development process. That way, they aren't paying fifteen thousand dollars for a set of plans to get made up, and then we're like, "Hey, can you add some trees here?" And now they're paying another thousand dollars for some trees to get plotted on the plan, so.
Correct.
Okay, great, that's all I got.
Okay, so we'll open the meeting up. Uh, if you have anything you'd like to say, we'd like to ask you to go to the podium and use the mic. I think everyone has had a chance to review this. Have you, or?
A little bit.
Yes.
Okay, so if you'd like to give us a little bit of introduction, feel free to. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for having us, uh, tonight. Uh, I'm Daniel Pinkerton. I'm a engineer, um, helping, uh, helping out on the project. Uh, I have letters of, uh, support from members of the community. If I'll, I'll pass those around, if that's all right?
Yeah, it's fine. And I've got one, uh, as well.
It's only one of these, but there's many of these.
Okay. Oh, okay. They, they, we received that after the packet was put together, which is why you guys are getting a printed-out version tonight, by the way.
Oh, oh.
And what is this? That's a letter sheet. Private, private school something. Okay, these are all the same, so, well, just pass them around. Everybody take one.
You want to come the other way, too?
Oh, no, yeah, they're the same.
The other way, too.
Oh, okay, it's all the same, okay.
Yep, those are all the same.
In the big sack, it's all the same. And this is the only one of this, from Phyllis Bray. Right. Uh, we also have all, all the neighbors here, um, and, uh, so, they'll be here, uh, providing comment as well, so. Uh, but, in summary, it's gonna be a phased approach, uh, so-
That's one that there's only one.
On the north, uh, north, we have, uh, State Road in the north. And, uh, phase one only includes, um, a, uh, a modular classroom, right there, and a hoop house, which is agricultural, uh, greenhouse, uh, structure, right there, uh, with all of the site work as well. So, uh, the parking, um, uh, the parking and then the pool through for the, for the drop-offs of, of the children. So, uh, on the left, we have, uh, screening of evergreen trees, uh, a five-foot minimum diameter, a space at twelve feet on center. Um, and then, um, so it's, uh, this is just, again, this is just the developed portion of the project. Um, the, uh, utilities are gonna be, uh, of the sewer, uh, so it's gonna, we're gonna tap into the forest, uh, forest sewer main. Uh, uh, you know, consumers for electrical and, um, and then consumers for gas as well. We're providing, uh, extra handicap spaces. We wanna make sure that, uh, uh, handicapped children and people can, uh, can access without issues.
Remind me, your water source, is that well?
It's a well, that's right.
Just one?
Just one.
Six inch, four inch?
The mi- just mid-Michigan Health Department. We're, we're working with them right now. They, we don't know yet.
It's in progress, that's right. So, uh, the, uh, you know, we, we wanted to make sure school buses could be, could have access, so all the drives are designed, uh, to allow access for a full-size school bus, uh, as well as the fire trucks as well. So, you know, that's, that, that's the, the basis of, of this. This is just, like, you know, the developed part of the, of the project, and, you know, there's, there's, the parcel's much bigger than this itself, but we're limited to, you know, fifty-foot offset, uh, from the property lines. Uh, so just the north part, so, uh, with that, uh, we could either go into questions or we could have others present. Would, would you guys like to present anything with the?
Before, before we do that, can you go back to the site plan again?
Yep.
I have one question on your site plan. What is the black area? Yeah, two black areas. I don't know what that is.
I think if you zoom in, it'll be more visible. I think it's the way the, I, I saw that I could see it, but you- Oh, yeah.
The graphic.
What's that?
Yeah, that's, it's somehow it's not. Yeah, but the hatch is too, it's too intense there, so.
Oh, I see, the black is future buildings.
Future buildings.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's.
Put those on to let, let the Planning Commission know. So, it's gonna be a reception area, which is gonna be a, a, a pole barn type construction. Uh, to the north, we're gonna have a, a pavilion, uh, building. And then phase three is also a classroom, uh, to the south of our, uh, initial phase.
Now, the hoop house is for what?
A greenhouse.
Okay.
What about this utility shed? What phase does that fall into?
Phase one.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's for the well, the well pump system and all the utilities too, so, yeah.
I don't know if we talked about, this is a deck right here? Or like not a deck, but like some stairs leading out the exit egress? We might need to bump that just a little bit farther south. We need ten feet of separation.
Oh, I see, yes. Not a promenade hall. Good catch. Yeah, so the main access currently, phase one, would be this ramp up to those main double doors there with a grass courtyard out to the north of the classroom.
So for phase one, you've got your handicap ramp there out of the parking lot. Are you going to have a sidewalk built to your front door or how do the people get there?
Uh, yes, the hatch there between the dark hatch and the asphalt is all going to be concrete. It's about a ten foot wide concrete sidewalk.
Oh, this will all be concrete?
Yes, that's right.
Kind of splotchy.
Yes.
Thought that was grass.
I guess I could have labeled it better, yes, absolutely. So that's going to be concrete, thank you, and then that's going to be asphalt driveway.
Yeah, so if the ADA, they'll come up the curb cut here and then they'll be able to get to the ramp. Are you going to do a little bit of a sidewalk here or will you just like make that a dirt path in the meantime?
I don't think we have plans here right now, because eventually that whole ramp would be temporary for when another building comes in.
One, and John, I'm sorry if I'm interjecting here, just one thought, and we might have talked about this before, but I can't remember. What are, what do you guys, so you have phase one, two, three here. Is there any idea, and I think it's fine for the answer to be, I don't know, but do you have any concept of what the time period between the phases might be?
I think that phase three, what I would say is more like a three year out. Phase two would be as soon as we could.
Okay. But not, we're not talking like twenty years and then twenty more years, okay.
No, I think the goal is that it would all be within three years.
Okay.
Three to five?
Yeah, I would see the second classroom as at least five years down the road, looking at rate of growth.
Currently, there's a ten to fifteen students there now?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight students now, and this would be making room for forty, is that correct? Okay.
We say there's twenty-eight students at this location or someplace else?
Um, we're currently renting at Woldemar Nature Center, so we've been renting there.
It's been in operations since 2022, so it started in 2022, 2023 year.
Okay.
Okay.
Existing operation, you're just going to move.
Just to get people, so we're not too much. John, I don't know how you want to do it if you want to have you go through your questions to this gentleman here or if you want to invite the public to the podium or is your meeting a run?
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, if you folks would come to the podium when you're making comments, the sound system picks up conversation much better that way. I think that the concern I would have is for your plan, we need to approve the whole thing, not pieces of it, otherwise you're going to have to come back and again and again. And I don't think that any one of us really would support that concept.
Well, one, one thing we talked to them about, John, and this is under Burt Gale's advice here, is we thought it'd be better to bring to the planning commission what the end goal is instead of them coming piecemeal. So that way you can see their full vision, because we thought like that was more transparent to you and the community. So that's, I think, what they attempted to do here.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to express, yeah. So you're renting at Woldemar now? That's quite a distance from Bath.
Yeah, I'm Sarah Kowalinski. I'm the founder director of Sundial Classical. I'm also the homeowner just across the road, just north of this. So of the properties that are directly impacted, mine is right there.
Right.
Yes, I started this school two years ago. We are, we've been renting at Woldemar. We have informed all the families from the beginning that it was always our goal to come here because this is land that my husband and I own. And so our plan has always been to come here.
Oh, okay.
So we do have actually quite a few local families who will be thrilled when we're here because they won't have to do the hike.
Interesting. So everybody got any other questions? Ray, you had a number?
No, I don't have any more.
Can I ask just a general question?
Absolutely, go ahead.
What do you teach?
My career is as a special education teacher. I started about twenty-five years ago. I've taught in the local communities here and I say, this makes me a little emotional, but I say this school was built from years of tears, of driving home and thinking, I know I could teach if I just had the right structure in the right place. I'll give a little, I could talk a lot about this school. I'll shorten it for you. I'll use the example of childhood obesity. We all say kids need more exercise, need to be connected to their food. Schools can't do that. They don't have the time for enough exercise. They don't really have the connection to the gardening, the growing facilities. So this school that I've envisioned is just different life structure. It's intentionally small. It's intentionally on a big amount of land and we get the kids outside and we, we, we teach the whole child, quite simply. Academically wise, if you're asking a specific question, it is all the core subjects. We get those done in the morning. We have a real intensive academic morning. Our afternoon is sewing, carpentry, gardening, outdoor education, dance, music, art. And then all day Friday is dedicated just to life skills. Our Friday instructor happens to be here. He's also one of the homeowners who lives just to the east of the property and he's also pretty invested in the success of this.
He must be the one with the goats.
Um, no, that's us.
Oh, that's you.
Sometimes the goats wander, but no. Occasionally, yes, yes.
I just wondered, you know, generally speaking, what, what the, what the dream was and what the, and I guess I have to ask, it's a five oh one C three.
It is.
Not based educational, I would assume. How do you get your funding?
Tuition based and grants and donations.
What age are your students?
Currently ages five to ten and we will somewhat add ages as need provides. We will never be a huge school. That is our first part of our mission, is that we are not going to replicate the problems that come with really big schools.
So when they graduate through your program at ten, then they use for a public school or private school depending on the parents?
Right, and we may not always cap it at ten. As space allows, we may increase a little bit, but then they may go. And we may also work something out with local public schools, busing, you know, that kind of thing. Homeschool kids go to public schools for some classes.
I saw K through twelve on here though.
We could eventually, you know, depending on the parent, if they choose to do a homeschooly type option with us, you know, for academics in the morning and then kids go to the public school in the afternoon for band and choir and science classes, that kind of thing.
Just that, no, from the land use side of like, let's say like K to fifth or sixth to high school, for us, it's educational institution.
Yeah.
Grades don't matter on the land.
That was just more personal interest.
I'm curious as well, but I was going to specify for land use.
Well, you're going to have kids someday, right?
Uh, you know, we'll see in this economy, we'll see.
I did want to add one comment about the conversation with the neighborhood. The neighbors are here today because I notified them. We've lived on that land for twenty years. George knows me. George plowed my driveway a few good times. Much appreciated. And so we went and notified the neighborhood. We want to be good neighbors. One of the first phone calls I made was to Timber Ridge Golf Course and I said, hey, our property, you know, borders yours. I understand you might have some concerns hearing about a bunch of kids in the woods next to golfers. And I said, the most important thing you need to know is the word classical in our title. That's there very intentionally. It's a long title, but we put classical in there because to us that means going back to teaching children respect and teaching children etiquette and manners and how to be good citizens in the world and how to grow up and actually contribute to your community. So I reassured him, our children will not be running amok in the woods disturbing your golfers. We will teach them boundaries. We will teach them manners. And so that was when I started those phone calls. And so we very much want to be good neighbors with our neighborhood. We're very aware of traffic concerns and we, from the beginning, our conversation with Daniel was about, we have to have a long driveway. We have to make sure we are not backing up traffic on State Road. We're going to have staggered drop off times. We're going to have long driveway. We will def- our families carpool. I put in there a note that, did my paper get passed around to all them? There's also like a traffic alleviation plan that I notified the neighbors and I talked about the fact that, okay, we've got forty kids or we could have forty kids. Right now with twenty-eight kids, I can tell you personally, ten of those twenty-eight students arrive in two cars. I drive five of them. Another mom drives five of them. So don't look at numbers, enrollment numbers and think that that is cars. Because we're a multi-age facility, because, you know, we're not just a public school that serves a couple of grades, because we serve multiple grades. We will have sibling groups coming in and that will reduce the number of cars. Any further questions?
Miles, is there a way for you to just rough a footprint on that?
Yeah, just to overlay. I'll do the best I can. Let me zoom out here so I can get my scale going. All right, so they got about, what was the length to the engineer? What's the length of the facility? What, what's your side profile of the building? Is it twenty-two feet wide?
The side of the what?
The side of your building, the prefab structure. How long is it?
It's a twenty-four feet wide, that's right.
Twenty-four feet, okay. So you can see, the question was, how is this going to fit on the site? They're asking me to overlay it real quick since you don't have a full zoom out.
Sure.
As stated, the structure sits a little bit back in this site. I want to eyeball it about here. Let's say twenty-four feet wide. It's going to be about there. I, I, it might be a little bit farther to the right there. But something like that. And how long is it?
Sixty, sixty-four?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
So it's about where the tree is.
This tree right here?
That's right.
Probably into east west along.
Rotate ninety.
Rotate ninety?
That's right.
This way?
That's right.
Oh, okay.
So it's just that top square there.
Yeah. So they, it's kind of deceiving. It's one of these parcels where like scale is hard to imagine because you're looking at this plan. You're like, that's huge. But then when you, the site allows for, there's more space here than I originally thought because I was like, there's no way. You know, they've got neighbors right on top of them, but they can get the setbacks quite easily. They've got a little bit more space to work with. It looks like, because when you zoom out, you're like, oh, it's a big parcel. Look how much wet area there is. No way in this tiny amount of land, but they got, they got space.
Yeah, they sure do.
Because you look at this, they've got quite a large outbuilding here, a home right here and another outbuilding here. They're taking up about the same footprint that, they have doubled the amount of dry land to build on that this footprint of these three structures take up. So. I don't know. I don't, I guess I don't have any major concerns with the buffering and placement of the site. Here, let's zoom in on this. They've got, they've got more than fifty feet on the side yard setback. They're tight on this side, but that's why they got more buffering on that side. Now, the, the minimum for the drives is five feet off a property line, so.
What's the total width of that parking lot? Maybe it was mentioned.
Uh, they got about fifty feet here, so. Overall, it's.
The paved area of the parking lot.
It's about, it's about seventy-five feet wide, so those parking spaces meet the minimum dimensions for the township. It's a fifteen foot wide drive and twenty-four foot wide parking spaces with both of them. So that's, what is that?
You're making me do math.
Well, really, what I was getting.
Seventy-five is probably about right.
For a parking lot like that with drives on both sides, sixty-five feet is minimum. But you get twenty, you get twenty foot, forty feet for parking.
Sure.
That's not enough. Seventy-five is better.
And that's H M A. H M A, that's right.
Yeah, no, they got, when we had the conversation with the fire marshal, when they go to do their full site plan, he'll send them the modeling of their fire trucks and make sure he can get his turns in.
I guess there's other questions for us. Fire department could have comments on that is if they have a fire, where do they get their water? They have to use tankers or?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't know. I mean, they'll probably, that'll be an interesting thing that they'll say, June, yeah, because they cannot kind of have fire hydrants, they don't have water. They're not going to be able to supply it from their well. They'll have to use tankers.
That's what they use to cross the street for the fire across.
And they're not going to require it to be sprinkled either. They're not going to meet the bar where they would require it, so.
And you're taking the runoff to the south?
That's right. Runoff will just follow the current grade.
There's other creative things they can do though to like enhance, to minimize your risk profile. And I mean, for insurance reasons, you guys are going to want to look at some of this, but I know like in some of the older buildings, like apartment buildings that were built before sprinkler systems were required and they're trying to minimize their risk profile for insurance reasons, you actually get these pod things that when they're exposed to fire, they release fire retardant powder. So that's a good way of like minimizing your profile. Just don't get, don't accidentally set one off. It'll rob, it'll rob all the air out of the room and it sucks.
We don't like that.
I've been, I've been through, I accidentally did that and it sucks.
That must have been a marine training thing, right?
That pond to the south too is, I don't know how far away that is, but I know.
Oh, the pond on the south end of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I know, but development has a pond like that and they actually put a thing in the pond that the fire could hook up to and pump water out of the pond.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
That'd probably be a safer way to minimize your risk profile.
It used to be pretty common, yeah.
Looks like a dry period on, when that sketch was made.
Is that, is the pond what this is here?
Yeah.
Is that the start of the.
If you go to the other drawing, I mean your GIS.
There's.
This scroll, yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Keep going, keep going down.
Going down. There's a pond right there.
Over on the right side of your screen.
Oh, that, that pond. I guess when I was referring to pond, I was talking about this is quite wet in there. You could even.
Pump a wetland area. It's not, I don't know if you could pump out of that, but there is a pond to the east there.
I mean, they're stealing water sometimes.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah. It's probably seasonless.
Mostly there is, yeah.
Yeah, but in the, in the summer, it's going to be bone dry, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, not reliably wet, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, for scale, that's probably a hundred and fifty feet from the building.
Yeah, I mean, you maybe get some kind of hose system hooked up, but yeah, so you're going to be pushing it. It's just something to consider, I guess. I will, I'll let the fire marshal give us his thoughts. I don't want to speculate about that.
I don't, that's his privy. So this other construction that is going to be, what, I, obviously you got two classrooms that are prefabbed.
Oh, yes, the other construction, the reception area that, it's really dark just to the north there, is going to be a pole barn type construction. But it's just going to be restrooms in there and a reception area. So where the students first enter. And then to the north of that, it's going to be a, you know, a pavilion, timber frame structure, shingle roof on both of them, so.
And you say this, this is going to connect into a public sewer in the street?
Yeah, there's a public sewer in the street.
So one interesting thing about the sewer conversation, as I know you guys have been talking to SCUMA as have we, which it's important and I again give these guys credit for approaching the utilities on the front end. Because we talked about, you know, we've had some projects in the past where people haven't done that. It's a project killer and then we go through this whole thing for not. It's force main running through there, so just to go off of this. These two developments here are gravity fed. This force main coming across here is what feeds that gravity. In consultation with SCUMA, they believe that they're open to them tapping into the force main. They will just have to pump twenty-four seven and they know.
Yeah, the pump, okay.
Yep. And I mean, if they don't pump, I mean, just beyond, the risk is on you guys. If you don't pump, it's going to be a bad, bad situation for you. The rest of township will be fine. It's not our liability.
They have to pump. To get into a force main, you've got to pump it.
You got to pump. If they don't, if they don't. Well, if, if you, if you're, you don't want that pump on a backup. I mean, if that pump ever fails, it's coming to you.
Yeah.
SCUMA will talk you through all that, obviously. Yeah, I don't think it's uncommon for schools to have backup power anyway, so that's one thing you, you're probably going to want a generator on here somewhere, so you want to locate that on the site plan as well.
Yeah, I think so.
We had plans for that, if I was shattered.
Sure. Again, I think with the, even with the, the pump situation is going to be a long-term cost to you, but your initial cost with the pump, the tap in and the generator won't meet what you would have paid for a commercial septic field, you know?
No, definitely not. Hey, anyone got any more questions?
I, I just have a question, an interest question.
Yeah.
I, I see you doing a lot of, for lack of a better term, I'll say holistic teaching. What are your thoughts and practices, potential practices of like self-sufficiency, alternative energy, things of that nature, wind, solar? practices, potential practices of like, self-sufficiency, alternative energy, things of that nature, wind, solar?
Can we get your last name, sir?
Sure, my name is Matthew Romans. Uh, and as Sarah mentioned earlier, uh, you know, I'm, I, I work with the, the school currently as the Friday instructor for the, the All Day Friday program. And I'm also the neighbor there to the, just to the east of where the, the site is looking to be developed, yep, that parcel there.
Okay.
So my wife and I live there, um, along with our three children, so. Uh, so yeah, to your question, you were asking about holistic, fun stuff.
Yeah, like self, you know, self-sustainability, uh, you know, maybe even wind, solar, things of that nature.
Yeah, I mean, we could nerd out about that kinda stuff for a while, I, I think it's, I, I, I think during the initial development, just wanna make sure that everything's up to code and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and I apologize for deviating, it was just a personal.
No, that's okay, I mean, I, I think that what we wanna get the students involved in a lot is precisely those kinds of projects, have been involved in the development of some of those things. So, you know, it's called Sundown Classical Farmstead, so it will, by its very nature and name, be something of a farmstead as well, so. My, my trade is in small-scale organic agriculture, but I like to nerd out about the permaculture stuff, so. Um, it's all forms of alternative energy, I think, are, are great projects, you know, geothermal to get involved in, or just trying to insulate more with the, the earth, so.
I always liked the compost thermal thing.
Yeah, that's pretty cool, run the pipes through, that sort of stuff, I think, yeah, there's a lot of great projects like that, that are accessible for the, the students to become involved in.
So are any of you old enough to have, uh, read the Mother Earth News?
Yeah, yeah.
I grew up with that, so.
Well, it's still around, it's a good publication.
Oh, I know, I know, but it used to be like, huge, you know?
Internet changes, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I don't, I don't know if I've spoken to, I, I think the, the only other thing I would say, I could, again, talk about, you know, agricultural vision a lot, but I, I think some of the vision that I'm really attracted to and excited about with this project is that the school will be something of a, a beautiful farmstead, like, from, from the road, the, I think the idea that we've envisioned isn't that it would just be like an ugly-looking school, sorry to be so negative, but, um, but it, you know, the hoop house is oriented towards the, the road, so as people pass by, it would look more like an interesting space, where there would be these buildings and might look something like a farmstead as well, so. I'm, I'm excited to do, you know, our front yard is adjacent to that too, so I think that would be involved in some of the work as well.
One question about the hoop house and kinda the ag side of use that I have, from like, the land use perspective, is storage of agricultural materials, like there are gonna be piles of mulch out front, like, where are, where are these materials? Is the hoop house gonna be self-contained, where everything needed in the hoop house is within the hoop house, are we gonna have materials stored throughout the site?
No, it's, the kinda farming that I'm really interested in is like, the stuff that our great-grandparents were doing, it's, it's, it doesn't involve a whole lot of mechanized tools or implements smattered throughout the landscape, it's just more hand-scale.
Okay.
Stuff, so it's, yeah, it's, it's not a lot of machinery.
Cuz there is, there is ordinance requirements around, you know, the storage of building materials, lumber, um, anything that could be considered blight.
I'm, I think, what I'm envisioning is, think of nice, big garden, like with small orchard trees, that's kinda what I've envisioned in that front. All, all that land up there. What's your?
Is this a Monday through Friday school, so like, it's normal hours, like eight hours a day, Monday through Friday?
Any more questions? Are you planning on doing summers as well?
We could potentially do summer camps down the road, um, phase one, we're just getting up for next, uh, next, uh, school year.
You're gonna have to, so somebody can keep track of the garden during the summer.
Yeah, well, we live right there, so it's a little available.
Do semesters run with normal school semesters?
A little bit, um, uh, we're a little bit shorter than the typical school year, um, by design, uh, we, we like the long summer, but yes, essentially, pretty similar.
Okay.
So, the, the goal is to have construction ready to select all, all schools, so. Would, we want to show all the proposed buildings and keep them as they are shown now, or should we just show phase one, what's the planning commission's opinion on that?
I think we'd like to see the whole development, oh, whatever your, your vision is for the complete project. You should keep, keep the phases marked like you have them now, so we know. Right, what to expect. Sequence of, sequence of construction, yeah.
Sure, and the full set of plans, we'll, we'll, we'll show all the elevations, and it'll show the full scale, zoomed out, so you can see how things are, uh, give you a better idea. We just wanna make sure you guys are okay with the, the basis of it before proceeding.
Any more questions? Miles, you got anything else?
No.
Alexa?
I think we've got somebody who wants to speak.
Yep.
Aren't you done with the, thank you, Kyle?
Certainly, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Penn O'Meara. I'm the old boy that owns the house. To the left there. And, uh, going to, I didn't really have the opportunity to see this, so I could take some better shot, uh, take a better look at it. That was a bit cool. Some of the things have jumped out at me, I've been doing this for about fifty years as a landscape architect, so I'm had more of a physical, uh, site and facility kinda thing. And so that's what I'm looking at, and I didn't have a whole lot of information uh, what we're seeing here today, uh, and so I'm looking forward to look at that some more, a few things that jump out at me. Uh, pretty much flat, topal area where, uh, collecting the water and moving off, even more so since we've got quite a bit of hard surface that's going to be moving over that, I wasn't expecting to see that much. Uh, drainage concerns along with that, of course, is where's it going? You've got the pond to the south, you've got that swamp, which is doing really well, thank you, this year.
Yeah, this year.
And, uh, hard surface runoff that's being proposed here, so actually, there's gonna be some, uh, changes in terms of where it runs to and what's in it, you understand what I'm saying? So, uh, you don't want to offend that swamp, or the, or the pond, uh, by having materials being washed into that, so that's, and that, we do that all the time, right, and, but, uh, that's certainly something to look at so that you don't, uh, uh, destroy that or alter it. And we talked about the sewage system and, uh, the force, I figured you'd go with the force main, uh, well water, groundwater, um, elevations back there for the groundwater table, as you can see, is quite high, right, right now, and so you can dig down a foot and a half along the edge there, and you got groundwater table right there. So, there's a lot of that land is just, uh, marginal as far as, uh, uh, water. Now, if the utilities, that's cool, uh, now, I was wondering about a septic system, but the forced drain would be good. Um, my concern is that also, in an overall view, is that, uh, sort of rural residential run here. And to have something like this in here doesn't necessarily seem to fit in to what we got going. And when I tie that in along with the amount of room on the lot for all this stuff to go in, I was concerned about it being crowded. But I wasn't too sure as to what the final numbers are gonna be, now I got a little better idea of what's going on with the phases, then I can look at that a little differently. Twenty people is not obviously the same as forty people. When you start moving those around on a simple paved road, and, uh, you've got, uh, people coming in and going out. I was curious as to how they were gonna handle that, uh, access for, you know, in and out. Now, currently, State Road is, uh, is sort of a conduit, and it's been this way for fifty years. Northern locals use it to exit, access, uh, Hazlet Meridian Township, and so that road's pretty busy. And if I'm not mistaken, there is no speed limit on that, so it designated sort of fifty-five-ish.
It's forty-five.
Is it forty-five?
Yeah.
Well, that's a great point. Someone knows that.
Yeah, it's, it's posted forty-five.
Is it forty-five?
Yeah.
Well, that's good, because that would be, uh, they moved down that road, uh, quite a bit in their home, but, and of course, they have the dead ends that, in a nine-tenth of a mile length of State Road, there's a lot of activity that gets in there. Also, too, the, uh, the roads itself has got a hollow at the west end, where you can't see a vehicle coming in, and that catches me more times than not. And then at the other end, we've got a hill, and so that, what I'm saying is, it shortens up viewability of vehicles. So that, uh, you have to, you have to plan accordingly, because you can look one way, look back, and they can hide that little hollow down there, it's sort of nasty. Then all of a sudden, it's right there, so, having that, uh, shorten the distance, I was worried about that. The amount of vehicles, the congestion, uh, the interactions going on, you've got the, uh, subdivision, and that's, uh, home, uh, you know, a lot, a lot of homes there, so a lot of traffic in and out, and in close proximity where we are here. And then I, I didn't know that the buses were involved with that, but I know buses to both schools are up and down that road. So I keep throwing all that into the mix, and, uh, that, I think, is gonna be a possible issue with just the, uh, the amount of vehicles that are using.
One, one important point, I guess, because you're bringing up traffic several times, is that a part of our process here is, you know, tonight's introduction, they're gonna go after this and create a full set of plans. Once those full set are submitted to the township, we'll then reach out to all of our partnering agencies, you know, uh, sewer authority, water authority, well, in their case, that'd be the health department, um. One of those partnering agencies will be the Clay County Road Commission. So in Bath Township, as is common with most townships, uh, they, the road commission county will maintain and operate the roads. So as a part of their agency review, could, some of the issues that you're bringing to light, they'll analyze for us, and they'll kind of advise, uh, the planning commission on what do, do we think traffic's a concern here, if, if they come back and they say, we think it's doable, but we'd like more information, they can always request a traffic study, but we, uh, uh, more often than not, leave it to, and it's, well, everything's completely at the pleasure of the planning commission here, but more often than not, they will take in the advice of the road commission on what, what they should be concerned about.
Since I didn't have this to look at, uh, now I, I have a little more meat on the table.
Yeah, sure, sure.
And so that allows me to look at this differently, and, and some of the questions have been answered that I had.
Yeah.
And so I guess I'm just, uh.
No, I think you're bringing up a lot of good points, sir.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But I could see it, it's a busy road anyway, and of course, what they'll probably do is cut down the speed limit there, which may not be a bad idea. Forty-five, with all these characters mixing in and out, uh, I think, uh, be a possibility of, uh, some trouble there. And the green spaces and the buffers, us greens always have to have grass growing on the site, otherwise you just don't feel we've done our job. So, uh, uh, I was, I was looking to see how that lays in, it looks like they've done some thinking along that line. So, that's cool, I guess I'd like to see, uh, you know, this done up in a manageable form, so I could, uh, take a look at it. I'm not sure how excited I am about that going in just to the east of my, uh, my home, but, uh, let's, uh, take a look at it, see what's going on. Uh, my biggest concern is, is whether this actually ex- uh, accentuates the, uh, property taxes or locks them down, because now the, the home is not, uh, valued because of its close proximity to a, sort of a non-zoned, uh, from my standpoint.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I can, I can offer up a little bit of, um, I guess, input in that area, so in my experience, this is the classic planning question, whenever any land use is trying to locate anywhere, which is like, what's it gonna do to my property value?
Yeah.
Kind of the whole, there's, there's zoning at a fundamental level, and these guys have heard me say this like, a number of times, really is in place for two reasons, and the main reason that we always reference is to mitigate conflict between land uses. So, they have a land use, you have a land use, or the purpose is to mitigate any conflict between you guys. The second reason is to maintain and improve land values over time. As a taxpayer of the township, we are charged with safeguarding your investment of your property. Um, in my experience in planning, not just in Bath Township, but all over the state of Michigan, is people are always concerned when a land use is introduced.
Sure.
Uh, nine times out of ten, your property values are gonna go up as a result of this land use, not down.
Let me get that signature.
Yeah. Sir, I, I can.
I don't know why.
I can almost guarantee.
You can almost guarantee?
Almost guarantee it.
Oh my god.
I'll never say, yeah, never say never, yeah.
And we hardly use that in our office.
And especially in, I, just in general, in the southern Bath Township area, you, I don't know if you have, get on Zillow as much as I get on Zillow and look at land values.
No.
But, this, southern Bath Township is a very desirable area to be in. Oh, yeah, big time. It is insane, you should look, get on Zillow, you will have sticker shock.
Well, I got the golf course on one side, and now I got the, uh, the holistic group on the other side. And across the way, I got two goats. And floodwaters behind me, that might be a special.
Sir, I saw a house go for sale, that was five acres on your road earlier this, you know, month ago, it went for five hundred thousand dollars. On five acres.
Wow, I can believe that.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending what your square footage was, okay, but that's fine, I don't mean to stand up here.
It was like three thousand square feet.
I, I'll be looking, now I got some of the information, so that, uh, gives me a little more to, uh, go on, and, uh.
But, we, we kinda say quickly too, John, sir, obviously, I'm not trying to like, allay or, uh, any of your fears or concerns. Our objective here is to protect you as much as it is to administrate their process. Um, the planning department wants to be wholly transparent, so like, if you have an interest in seeing how this is moving forward, um, I'll give you my card, uh, before you leave. Just email me, as soon as I get a set of plans from them, I'll send them to you, so you're fully informed through this process.
That'd be good, and then I got something I can, uh, work with.
Yeah.
As opposed to shoot at.
Well, good, well, your land rights are just as, you know, you have a right to your property, just as much as they have a right to their property, so.
Good, well, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. It's, uh, kinda nice and, uh, serendipitous to have the, the only landowner that's not involved in the project here, also, to be a sounding board, so appreciate you attending, and by all means, you can get this information on, on the Bath Township website too, under the, get the packet.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, cuz this is sort of enlightening to me, I, you know, like I said, I'm used to dealing with it, I'm used to having information, so I can
Yeah.
Deal with it, so this.
And so you, you're a landscape architect, you said?
Yes.
Well, it may behoove you to be involved and, you know, design that, that west, western facade of, of their property then, so you could.
I think the waterfalls would be true.
The fountains.
Yeah, water blasting, nightlights, uh, yeah, I can be worked with. Yeah, yeah, and that's my biggest concern, is all that activity.
Yeah.
It's certainly changed, changed my, my little domicile.
Your screen.
Yeah, if you're gonna be seeing people at night, cars running their headlights through your living room, something like that, so.
Could you zoom that up a little bit, so you could.
Could you point out, uh, your, your place? It's a little too zoomed.
He's right there.
No, it's, it's a, go out more.
No, that's it, right there.
Okay.
Right, right there, you're the one with the barn that, I, uh, I see there all, you've been there a long time, haven't you?
Who, who you?
I've been here since sixty-six, so I've.
Really?
Yeah.
I think I came here in seventies, rented, and then I bought it from Vouch.
Sure, I remember that property, it's, it's. Pretty desirable.
Well, when I come to Vouch was gonna build his home, okay? I said, I'd be glad to help you with that, that ten acres you got. I said, why don't you put your house over?
Way away.
Way far away from where I'm at, so I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just on uh his concern there, I guess, one point of note that could help with the headlights, um I don't know if you guys were already planning to do this, but if you put your ingress going here And have them pull around and the egress going this way. Okay, cool. That will help the headlights hit you, not him.
Because that's not a paved area, the number one, looking at it. And uh, and uh, these of course would be probably green spaces occurring there. But uh, yeah, when you start throwing in the activities of various types, weekends and evenings, that sort of thing, Then that gets to be uh a little busier and a little more long-term.
And that's, that's what the conifers are for, and then on the drainage side, similar to the road commission issue, the Clay County Drain Commission, they'll be reviewing the set of plans and we, we'll take their uh advice into, or the plan, not we, the planning commission will take Their advice into consideration.
Well, I was curious how they're gonna have egress, because there's no way, you know, with that many vehicles, you gotta.
It looks like they'll go out this way.
Yeah, and of course, that's one way out, right? And then this over here is twenty-four foot, so that's wide enough for cars to pass. Because you could actually see that getting to be a problem. People are on the road, you're coming on out, you got a car, you know what I'm saying? Because I think that, I even moved my mailbox this winter Because I was noticing I'm not seeing enough down the west road there. And uh, and they, but that little hollow thing, you look, think you're good, you look this way, My God, you look back again, and there's a car moving along at forty-five miles an hour.
So their engineer is probably aware, but one thing that the road commission always looks at is site triangles. So it's, you have to have a minimum distance they can see of, of clear, unobstructed distance.
That's good. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time on that.
Thank you, sir.
But anybody else have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm all set. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
One more. I'll keep it brief though.
Can we get your first and last name?
Robert Voight, and I'm at seven oh two four East State Road, so I'm twice removed from the property.
You're here. You own several parcels, I think.
That's correct, yeah. And uh, I, I've retired recently. I'm a forty-plus year teacher. And uh, I come at it first from what good this can do for kids. And with their uh stated vision of connecting with families and the community, Uh, I see it as a real positive, a real plus for Bath Township. In public school, uh, teachers don't always call the shots, as you may be aware. Uh, there's a lot of prescription going on. And the best of my experience had to do with hands-on, hands-dirty, project-oriented, Uh, self-selection in the terms, uh, the projects that the kids wanted to do. I see the best uh of, of what I've experienced incorporated in the model That is being adopted by this school. So I'm just all for it, except Uh, I, I would have two rejoinders. Uh, one, because I also read uh Mother Earth News, I think you should put a geodesic dome somewhere Just for uh, uh, old time's sake. Along with the waterfalls.
The sun dial, of course.
Yeah, and the sun dial. Uh, but more seriously, and uh, and following what uh Pat said Uh, about the water situation, I know the neighbors, uh, and I have Flirted with the public drain commissioner over the past four or five years About that drain, the Porter drain that runs across the back here, Wanders uh past the Romans' house and then through my property. Uh, and it has admitted that the tiles are broken up in there and Uh, so it leaves uh water uh overlong in the spring and through the summer. So that might be something that uh, we just make a footnote Uh, and uh, and explore that too. I hear the drain commission will be involved. Uh, it would be nice to know that, uh, that drain is looked at and makes sure that the overflow is Using best practices, that it's hitting the drain, and that drain will work all the way uh through our contiguous properties.
Do you know, is that drain a county drain or just a drain?
Porter Smith drain.
That is the county drain. Broken tiles in the county aren't fixing.
You can sort of see where it runs by the area that's remained marshy and open there, right? And it crosses the road and then comes back over on the other side.
It's this light gray line right here.
Goes to the retention pond of that neighborhood.
And where's the retention pond of the drain with that?
Right, right there at the um.
Right in State Road?
It's north to the east of the Lattice Lane.
Right there.
Go to that road.
Yeah, up in there.
Right there, right there.
When the earlier gentleman spoke about drainage, and the county drain will take a look at this closer than I would, but One possibility is we might have to put in a detention area. For two reasons. One, to make sure if you get heavy rain, it doesn't just flood that thing off that, off that paved area right away. And the other thing is that would cut down on pollution that's getting into that swamp and the lake.
They could put some remediating species in there too, some pull them out of the.
Put in a big rain garden.
I'm sure that's something that would be. They, they'll speak to.
One thing I, I want to say is that um, in light of the Recent commercial projects we've had with drain problems, rest assured, that will probably be our, one of the main.
Yeah, the drain commissioner is notorious to be thorough.
There's been some serious problems with runoff.
Well, that, that actually, that actually will be in writing. It'll be in the sap report, so you'll see it.
Thank you.
The, the other thing that was brought up earlier was How the neighborhood's gonna look with this development in what's kind of, it's a rural area, but it's residential also. And I guess, I don't know if there's any way, because we've had experience with this in another project, not a small one like this, but We need to somehow make sure that wherever it goes here, and the hoop building may not be the right design, brought close to the road, to have it look like a residential area. So, I don't know if there's a way to fix that in some way, so that when somebody's driving by, they won't say, well, this thing doesn't fit into the neighborhood.
I think we'll, I think elevation drawing will help. The intent is to be visually attractive and not. One, just land use uh side of things that I, I will, I want to point out is um And I think, I know the development that we're referencing before, there was a development that came up before where it was an odd land use in a residential area. That land use was uh permitted by special use permit where this land use is a by right.
Right, I understand that, but still.
No, I agree. It should still, regardless of land use, it does by ordinance have to conform with the character.
Which it is kind of agricultural a little bit too around there.
You can make that argument.
One thing I am, I, I just wanted to mention, I have a peeve about is, is the headlight thing. You know, like with uh Big B Coffee, they did a good job at bringing forth Which we've missed in the past where you, they, like up on the hill on M seventy-eight, where they come out and the lights are now shining onto traffic. So when you're designing this, just keep that in mind if you have somebody that's gonna be stopped and in a um Sequence to get picked up or whatever, that, you know, the lights aren't shining into the neighbor's eyes across the street. Or um, you know, into the neighbor's eyes next door. Because I, I'm kind of peeved about that.
Basically, I live on Pastoral Pass, like a few houses in, for the last thirteen years, so I've been neighbors with all these folks for a while. Um, I as a, as a mom of three kids who gets on one of those public school buses, I have a question about the road commission, so I just had to make sure I ask it at the right time of when that happens. Of just, the traffic does concern me because I've watched my kids almost get hit by cars flying through, and the buses stop, lights are flashing More times than you would believe. Like, people don't follow road. So that's my only concern, I want your children in the school to be safe, because it's just wild how fast they are, Even when there's all these lights flashing. So I don't, like, when would the road commission get involved, and how can I make sure I share that as like A witness of how bad the road is so that they can really check it out?
You want me to? So, once they get a full set of plans, we'll kick that out for agency review. When this would be brought back after a full set of plans, You'll see right now in the packet, let me go to it. So this is a staff report from me, and you can see right now when I zoom in on, let me, I'm way zoomed out here, sorry. It's on the plan there. So you'll see right now, there's all these agency comments, and they're just blank, right? Because we haven't done an agency review. So when this comes back, this will be pages long of agency comments. One of those pages will be the road commission's comments. So at that time, you can kind of see where their concerns lie, if any, and again, their concern, it could be anywhere from like a page of like, We think this to like, we're not concerned. So, on your end though, just says like, involve citizen and some advice on how to go about, it's like, If you had an issue with some stuff going on in the township and you weren't happy with, uh, you know, whatever we're doing, You would come to the township board and like, as a citizen, uh, let your voice be heard to them. And because the rope is um managed by the road commission, You and operated and maintained, you pretty much have two avenues for um Letting your voice be heard. One is with the township's road committee, which is a liaison to the road commission, which Mr. Baker over there heads up, so you could come to that meeting and let us know. Regardless of this project, I don't like what's going on, the speed limits are out of control, my kid almost got hit. So they can bring that to the road commission, you always could just go directly to the road commission committee meetings as well and say, what are you guys doing?
Would that be for lights too? Because we tried that, and we got kind of bounced between the township and Consumers Energy. Because we tried to even get a light there, because it's so dark in the bus pickup morning time.
So that would be, that's more of a, that's more of a township one.
See, they told us consumers and.
Well, that, see, this is the, this is the problem, government. And, no, you're fine. This is like one of the main things that I do all day is put people in the right box. So, it's confusing because the township's lighting is operated and maintained by Consumers Energy. But where lights are located is the responsibility of the township board. However, know that whenever a light is added, You as a taxpayer, as a property owner, are within a lighting district. So if you add that light, it's gonna be at cost to you and your neighbors.
Sure, yeah, I think we all.
You should get with your neighbors, get a letter, and submit it to the board of trustees.
There's a whole process for getting it done, and he's right, that's where you start. To get the lighting district established, if there's not one already, they gotta pass a regulation to do that. They gotta decide who's in the district, who's gonna, who's gonna share the cost of this light.
I think in that area, there is one established.
There might be, yeah.
So, yeah, that's where I'm like, I want to be up there.
Get with your neighbors and get that letter and get involved. I mean, that's what it's all about. We love that, and we wouldn't know if you didn't let us know. We have no idea that you guys want a light.
And you might consider coming to a, a board trustees meeting on uh The first and third Mondays of the, of the month.
Well, when neighbors organize, they can get a lot done. Organizations know.
All right, that was my only question, if someone will try us at the time.
Get together with your neighbors, draft a letter and submit it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. George.
Go ahead.
We, we normally like during these discussions too, because this is a kind of a casual for us all, For everybody to be enlightened. So we will also contact, you know, the county and give them a heads up usually if we know something's going on. So they can do a little preliminary work before they have to actually do the work. If they're, you know, while they're out, they might put a, like, something up their counter to do counts in the meanwhile or whatever, so.
Because, yeah, we like to have our data. You're saying that, you, and to, not to interrupt or. Um, you're saying speed limits are too high, we'd like a traffic count with speeds, so we can say like, actually, the data says everyone's going ten under.
Probably not the case on that road.
It will, the data's, the data's totally objective. It might come back and show everyone's doing sixty, in which case we got a problem.
I've got, I have one more question, if you guys don't mind. Do you guys intend anything to do with sidewalks? Like, since you have a huge subdivision, are you intending everybody's going to be driving? Or do you think some people will be walking?
Um, currently, all the families drive. I don't know. Currently, as far as enrolled students, they literally live at the Romans' house or my house across the road. Our kids are enrolled. But I, the simple of, I don't know.
That's okay, I was just curious.
Yep.
I mean, I think we would, those of us who live on State Road might enjoy a safer biking, walking experience. I can't say that the school has any.
They, they'll have to establish the easement per our new rules, but uh, I would, I guess my suggestion would be unless, Unless it's somehow proven that like, you know, eight of these households are supplying students here, And then it becomes a safety issue of us to create a walking path, it wouldn't be huge for me. Um, what we probably will require from you guys, Eh, again, at the pleasure of the planning commission, they could require by all means, they have the authority to make you put a sidewalk Across all a hundred and eighty feet right here. That's well within their right to do. Um, because there's not sidewalk walk a- anywhere else on state road, I guess my recommendation would be that we gain uh easement for future sidewalk. So if in two thousand fifty we come through and there's enough density on this road to justify it, we won't have to gain an easement, we'll have it in place.
I'm just thinking about myself, you know?
Does that affect our cycling, um, the easement?
No, you gotta, you're gonna have to be that far back from road anyways. We'll come in and we make the cuts if we had to at that point in time.
It's just something we're starting to do currently.
But, but the other thing with the easement, I don't know what the road rate, right away width is. If it's wide enough, we wouldn't need an easement, it would go, it would go in the right way anyway.
That's true.
Thirty-three feet.
That's true. We'll, we'll look at all those things, so that was, that's something that will get drawn out. No, no, it's fine. No, it's a good question. It's good for everyone to know what to expect.
All right, let's move on, gentlemen. Can we move on? Let's do a one-year extension?
Nobody here from Park Lake Apartments, is there?
For Park Lake Apartments?
Uh, yep, the one-year.
Thank you, folks, for coming.
Let me just zoom out here and then zoom back in real quick. All right, uh, so the applicant for this uh is not here tonight. Um, they can, They said if you guys want them to, they felt like it was a pretty simple request. I didn't tell them, they were like, do you think we should be there? I'm like, oh, it doesn't hurt, you know, but They said if, if you guys want more answers from them on why they did this, they request that you please just table it, and they'll be at the next meeting, you can bring it back. But basically, if you guys remember, the folks that established the Park Lake Apartments, this might have been uh before your time, Mr. Crainer. But it's just to go on the map here, so you are understanding what we're talking about. It's the two outlots right here in front of this uh commercial development. They are seeking uh three buildings at forty units. Yes, sir. Sorry about that. And just send me an e- send me an email. Make sure you send me an email so I can know your contact info, so I can send you the plan.
Okay, send you an email asking for.
Yeah, uh, whenever the site plan's ready, can I get a copy? And I'll send you one. Thank you, sir. All right, sorry, I'm sorry for that, guys.
No, that's fine.
So, uh They wanted three buildings. Those buildings would encompass forty units. They got approved just under a year ago now. Um, what they're essentially saying, and I won't read the whole thing, is, as we all know, We're in a historic time of rates increasing, when they. When they did this project or were planning out, uh, you know, the commercial construction loan for this. They were in the rate environment of like a two percent, um, a two percent interest rate on that construction loan. They're now in the environment of an eight percent, uh, so their pro forma is upside down. Um, as I think anyone could imagine. So they're basically saying, hey, it's not an ideal time, the pro forma doesn't make sense, we want a one year extension and hope that market conditions approve. That's the crux of their argument. You guys, uh, the planning commission has the authority to grant them a one year extension or deny a one year extension. If they, this isn't really something where you can like approve with conditions that can.
Don't really see any negative to extending it.
No, I don't either. With the, especially with the rigorous, uh, overview we did, we had, we've had it already, you know, with the, they've, they've bent over backwards to do all the.
They, they improved their development.
A lot.
Yeah, going from those five buildings to the three, yeah, agreed.
Can I make a motion too?
Sure, you can do whatever you want. Unless there's more discussion.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me.
Any more discussion? I'm sorry, okay, no, that's okay. Let's make the devotion.
I'd like to make the motion to grant a one year extension for the, uh.
Park Lake Apartments.
Park Lake Apartments.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion of support, anybody have any discussion, well, let's support the motion.
Well, you better support, now you get the support, now you have discussion.
Yeah, alright, thank you Ray, I, I get confused sometimes.
Same, don't worry about it, I'm trying to learn from you.
Just a question, the other night at the trustees meeting, you talked about taking dirt and you were talking about putting a burn. Would that be on the north side of that property?
Um, no, it would be. It would, it would be on the property that is just east, the private property that's east of that development. Um, thank you for.
Was watching from home.
Sure, yeah, that's a legitimate question. Anybody else, buddy, discussion? Uh, how do you wanna proceed, Miles, you think we should have a roll call vote or just a consensus? Okay, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, myself, no. What?
Oh, that's, that's your purview, you.
Thank you.
Not that you need my permission.
Don't even justify it.
Alright, um, Lexi, oh, go ahead John, sorry.
No, no, that's, go ahead.
No, you, you gotta take us to the next item.
Yeah, I know, I, I was just taking a little pause, I see Ray wanted to take a break.
Do we wanna take a break and wait, cause the next one's a presentation?
Yeah, I think we should, do you don't mind, Lexi?
No, not at all.
Are you prepared?
Yeah, I am.
Lexi is always prepared.
She is. Just trying to butter you up so you do a really, really bang up job, you know?
And you guys like, what is this? No, none of you ever did that.
Trying to keep her from leaving?
Yeah, yes.
Just, just put in the minutes, like a brief recess.
What is under supporting better for new business?
Um, more under, uh, new business, so, right before B and C.
Can I ask, uh, Miles a question?
Sure, as far as I'm concerned, you can, I don't know about Miles.
So, uh, this, the sidewalk thing that we did tonight? We'll do an educational.
Yep, yep. The plan will be, you know, uh, construction through the summer. And then, uh, education through the fall and implementation of the, you know. Implementation of the construction standards, but you know, even the snow removal come winter. And there might even be, you know, some policy decisions that need to be, get made over the summer of snow removal. I know there's a discussion that, uh, Chair Wright wants to have. But that's gonna happen almost at the board level.
Yes, it is. Uh, are you aware, or is everybody aware that there's a parcel on Slate Road that the property owner owns to the center of the road? And we're gonna have to obtain an easement for the sidewalk?
I didn't know. I wasn't aware of that.
The last I knew, that was the case, it was when we put the sewer through there.
E and G has done all the surveying through there, so.
Hey, you might wanna check. You know where the dip is of the road and it's real swampy on both sides? The last I knew, unless it's been changed, that property owner owned to the center of the.
North or south?
On the south side.
I'll ask more.
I don't think it's a problem, but.
No, but that's goo- that's good.
Yeah, it's good to know, I, I'll ask them what the, if there was anything that got flagged on their surveying.
Okay, just, just double check this.
They surveyed the whole area.
I know that was like forty years ago, but. It was the case back then.
Nice.
Cause I mean, they flagged all kinds of easements and property owners we had to work with. E and G could have even handled that conversation insecurity. There's, you're talking about Slate. Webster Road, yeah, Webster, it's been tough on Webster Road, I won't go into details during the meeting, but.
No, that's okay. Okay, Lexi, wanna go ahead and present?
Sure.
Are you gonna get up at the podium?
Do you want me to?
No.
Miles.
You're fine, I think.
This is a pretty like informal presentation too, so this is just, um, so Miles and I went to a little. Solarium, what they called it, about the new Act PA two thirty-three regarding renewable energy being taken away from local. Zoning control. Basically, the whole entire time, there were several different aspects of the, the little conference we went to. But the biggest one was a lawyer presented on the impacts that this act will have on a local township like us. So you can go to the next slide. So the summary is basically the permitting process will affect us the most out of the entire act. So how we permit from now on on renewable energy will be hugely affected. It allows developers to apply directly to the state. So developers do have the opportunity basically to bypass us now unless we do something. But also even if we do something, they can still kind of just bypass us anyway. Um, the set statewide standards for the projects have changed a lot. Um, we're seeing that with Clinton County, with them having to redo their whole ordinance, so, because the, um, new standards are a lot different. And then this severely limits local control, we went to several, um, meetings about this and how this just really impacts our local community. The history behind why they wanted to do this was because the state had a really advantageous goal of being to, like. Huge renewable energy by twenty forty, the percentage is in like the fifty, sixty percent of our entire state being renewable energy. And they are not making that goal, they are not on track to make that goal. So this act was super developer driven and it passed very, very quickly because they were feeling a lot of pressure. And from financial reasons due to the fact that we are not on track to meet the goal by twenty forty. So that's the history and synopsis of why this basically happened. So there's lots of other stuffs about it, more history and stuff, and if you want. If you want more in-depth notes, let me know, but this is basically just a really quick overview of it. So, you have to meet with an elected official sixty days prior to conducting public meetings. All of this, these four slides are changes from what it used to be. The second biggest thing is the introduction of a C R O, so a compatible renewable energy ordinance. This basically means instead of the state handling the permitting process, we handling the permit process, but with the same standards of the state. So basically, we enforce the labor, we do it at a local level and that's called C R O. Unfortunately, the problem with a C R O is, is that everybody has to have a C R O in e- in order to do this process. So if we are neighboring to.
Victor Township.
Victor Township and they wanna put in a huge new solar field, but it's also in Bath and Victor. We're gonna have to have, the counties have to have the ordinance and the townships have to have the same C R O ordinance in place.
If one of us doesn't have the right ordinance in place.
Then it's done.
Then none of us have the right ordinance in place.
No, it, this only applies to projects though that are over a certain size.
That's true, you want preface that all.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Threshold trigger here.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about utility scale this whole time.
Yeah, this is utility scale and this is just basically, um, what we learned as well. Um, and then if one local unit says no, they go straight to the state, that's basically the huge effect of being a local unit, you scroll to the next one. But there's, for all of your considerations, as a planning commission, there are several things that we can do still. And basically, we'll have to decide on what option we want to go with. So number one is, we do create a C R O and we work with the other local governments and we all get on the same board and we all have a C R O. The issue with the C R O though, is that since this was passed so quickly. The legalities of the C R O aren't really amazing. So we listened to a lawyer talk about how there's a lot of things that aren't specified and there's a lot of weirdness with how do you actually measure utility scale? Like that's never defined, how you actually measure utility scale. So it's really, um, subject to whoever is reviewing it, it doesn't.
They put a megawattage on it.
They did, I was gonna say.
Yeah, no, I see the confusion in your face. They put a megawattage on it, but it is two hundred mega amps of DC energy versus two hundred mega amps of AC. Is different. Specify if it's measured in AC or DC.
A lot of people don't realize that wind turbines and, uh, solar cells especially. They're DC.
So you can see though, by not specifying if we're talking about AC or DC current, because it has to be stepped up and stepped down. Between when it gets on the grid and when it's not. By not specifying that, it's a huge like, which one are we talking?
Did they, did they do that intentionally to make it ambiguous?
I just think it was because of how fast it went through. And similar to what the lawyer, and I'm not trying to jump in here now, but I am. What the lawyer, and we'll get into this after, I'm gonna let Lexi finish up, but what the lawyer basically said is similar to the marijuana ordinance. Uh, some of this is just gonna have to get flushed out via case law over time.
There's also a payment, payment process with like, if you use DC or AC, which is different on the state level as well. So while it's like affects local control, it also affects state control because it's never specified DC or AC. And then that changes the cost of how the state is making you pay as well. So again, there's just a lot of issues with it. It also doesn't specify if it's regulatory zoning, so that means like Clinton County would have to be zoning and we would have to be regulatory, we can't.
For the C R O.
For the C R O, we can't have both, like we couldn't be regulatory and zoning for this. We have to split between all four of the, um, local.
That's their interpretation, that's also not clear.
Yeah, and which is like maybe that might be it, but they're not sure yet.
They're not sure.
The other option is to work more with a developer and this will include having more of a workable. Ordinance, which also isn't really specified either. It's more up to like the developer's discretion, like this is something that we can, um, it's done so we can attract developers. So let's say the state has a standard and we're like, oh hey, we'll change that standard a little bit in our ordinance to work with you and bring you here. It's done for incentive purposes, so we can bring more, um, renewable energy to your community.
Again, I thought they set a standard and we can play with it up to that point.
So the workable ordinance, you'd be playing under their standard.
I, I brought that to the.
That's why it's called a workable.
Board of Trustees. At the, that, possibly at that last meeting, but anyway, excuse us.
No, please, this is pretty informal, so we can chit chat too. Um, another option is to maintain an ordinance, so still to create your local zoning ordinance. And, um, leave it at that as long as we don't exceed state standards, that's very normal and what we've already seen before in Bath. The fourth option is to do none of this and give to the state. And then the state just takes it, so whatever developer wants to do renewable energy, we send them to the state and then that's their problem. So that is kind of like what the planning commission will need to decide of like, what direction are they feeling like we should go in? Cause if we're gonna do a maintained ordinance, um, Miles and I will look at the ordinance we have now and revamp it. But we didn't wanna do that and have everybody be like, oh, give it to the state and then we're like, oh, okay, so it was thrown by this ordinance.
And within that, give it to the state, um, option, there's also like a subcategory of. Give it to the state for utility scale, but we can regulate under that, so we talk more about the residential side. We cover the residential side right now, our ordinance for wind, but we don't really touch solar at all, I mean, solar is kind of a free for all in Bath right now.
And the, and the threshold up to where the, the, uh, legislation comes into effect, below that? That we potentially will write an ordinance for? That's quite considerable.
That would be my suggestion, I mean, we, we have good language for wind energy on the residential side. Because that was seen as a township, and this is before my time, as a more invasive use. Because typically solar, when it comes to residential, it's getting strapped to the roof. If it's a ray, we just treat it as accessory building at this point. And so it falls under the same things that whole barn and shedwood, which requires buffering. So that mitigated conflict, I, we have arrays come in the township, but so far, and you guys will see them in people's backyards when you're driving around. But, on the solar side, we haven't had too many issues. On the wind side, we had that one case that kind of popped out that caused some issues and got going riled up. You got more slides?
Yep, this is the last one, so this is the additional to it, so that's basically the huge overview of two thirty-three. This is two thirty-four, so this is the actual changes in zoning that we'll see, which we're the planning commission and planners. So we care about the zoning. So this, it states that anything built after January twenty twenty-one now has a non-conforming status in its zoning. So no matter where it is, it's currently non-conforming. This also allows the state obviously to take over the control and, um, any permitting process that we could do, we no longer can do for that. So the permits will change. Basically, if substantial construction, again, it's really vague and the lawyers have huge problems with it. But if substantial construction has occurred after January twenty twenty-one, you cannot revoke permits anymore. So that is a state, um, that's under the state's control now and you can't revoke it. So anything that started being built that is in this renewable energy, that's staying built, that's like no longer in our control. We couldn't do anything, even if it's half built and it's not being, continuing to be built on, not a problem anymore, the state will do it. And that's currently now the new changes to zoning. So, and that go, is effective February twenty-seventh, so in like two weeks. It will change the zoning non-conformity. The Act two thirty-three, that goes into effect in November, but they are in the process of petitioning against it. And there's a lot of signatures for that and if they can get the signatures, I think by the end of middle of May.
Yeah, they, they've got a shortened window here.
Yeah, the middle of May.
It's doable.
It'll go on the ballot for this upcoming election, if not, and they still get the signatures, it'll go in twenty twenty-six. So there is a movement by a lot of the municipalities against this.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
You care if I, yeah. Say a couple of things, um, real quick. So it's very interesting from the planning perspective, how this is all playing out, um, and that's why it's just the hot, it's the hot topic right now, you know? So like Lexi said, we, basically Lexi summarizing very quickly, um, and appreciate her putting this together. Uh, what we learned from the MTA's class that they did, Michigan Township Association, Michigan Planning Association. And a class that we went to at Saginaw, um, Valley University. Um, they kind of just did a full day in talking about this from the, the development side, the property value side, the legal side, the planning side. It's interesting, they amended the Planning Enabling Act, it's not an act that gets amended too much, so that was interesting to see as well. So they, have, we've been stripped of the, uh, local zoning control and local regulatory oversight. So it's interesting that they did both. What Lexi was saying about the C R O, I wanna, I wanna go over our options here, as I see them right now. Um, just to reinforce what's going on here. So that's point one, I wanna talk about some stuff that I've spoken to John about that we have coming up in the future possibly with you guys. So you can know what we have in the works, um, which I think is good. And then, uh, I wanna talk about, um. Well, I'll just go with those two buckets and we'll see. So, first of all, our options again, like Lexi said, so you can develop a C R O. So the, the benefits of the C R O is you may be able to have a little bit more local. So the the benefits of the Creo is you may be able to have a little bit more local oversight over stuff like. Uh landscaping was really the only major item where there's any kind of flexibility over the state rules, cause it's not well defined. However, w- we are putting ourselves in new territory, opening ourselves to legal pushback from the developer. Cause none of this case law has been similar to marijuana, nothing's been litigated out yet. There's been no push in either way. Um, the problem with the Creo, as Lexi said though too, it requires inner government communication and coordination. Not always ideal, right? Because the county just got done with the ordinance. I, who knows how long it's gonna take them to amend said ordinance. Kind of the interesting situation that Clayton County finds themselves in though is if they develop Creos. They're gonna have to develop a zoning and a regulatory Creo because they zone some of the uh county. However, we zone here, so we'll need our zoning Creo in place, but we're gonna need their regulatory Creo to back us up. Um. But then like if it crosses Victor Township and this is where I get into a gray area, which no one can answer for me right now. Let's say, and it's likely, there's only a couple of places where this can actually happen in Bath. So like our real world risk of this. I do think is somewhat minimal, so we're we're talking about a lot that I don't know if could ever even happen. But basically this parcel here, these two parcels here and this parcel here are our main areas where this can happen. If somehow this goes into DeWitt Township, cause they would have some areas here, let's say a big site comes in all through here, that's possible. They zone, we zone, the county will have to regulate. Now, the interesting question though is like, and I don't see this again being an issue. Because there's buffering of residential land uses here and it'd be a mess for them to try to go through this. I don't think a developer would. But let's say they go up to Victor Township, the county's like totally in a unprecedented territory and that's not well defined. Because they zone for Victor Township, they don't zone for us. But they, so are they gonna have to enforce the regulatory and the zoning side, but not zone on our, it's confusing. Um. So then the workable ordinance, so Lexi did a good job ex- explaining that, but basically what you're trying to do is not. Not really incentivize the land use. In your community, but you wanna incentivize the developer to be like, okay, you can go through the state process, which has a two-year backlog. Cause it's like five people administering the process, although I do think they have timelines on when they can get things done.
How they do.
But we could make our barrier so low on like, we could say, we're gonna get you in and out of the door in sixty days guaranteed. Now, we might make you do a little bit more landscaping, but time's money, right?
Right.
We could put a ordinance in place that curtails them into our lane. So that's one way to do it. That's really what the workable ordinance is trying to do. And then, I mean, my favorite option right now uh personally, and this is, I'm in the realm of opinion now, is. With the wild card factor of what we we know about this petition going around. Everything we're talking about and the whole shift of the regulatory landscape could change in like six to eight months. We could be spending a lot of money and resources trying to align some kind of Creo process with the county. Just to have local control back in November. So I guess I like the option of. Regulatory, looking into this issue on the residential side. Not worrying about the the utility side. Waiting, just because of our our function or our ability to actually get ordinances through. Waiting out November and then if November happens and there's no petition, we we can spin up an ordinance in three months.
Well, easily.
I don't think we're at risk in our area of some utility coming in in December. But I just don't see that as it as a likely scenario. I'm not saying it, so don't fire me if that happens in December.
We won't.
Yeah, but um that's my thought. And we'll have some idea of that petition. They have to again get the signatures by May, so we'll know midsummer that it's gonna happen now. So we could even spin this up by midsummer and be. Ready to regulate by November. So I guess that would be my recommendation is, you know, we can look at this on the residential side, but just wait out a couple of months to see what the utility framework is. We don't wanna do all of this for now, you know?
You're comfortable with that timeline?
I'm comfortable with it. Um, the, this is the only area in the township, these couple parcels right here where this could even happen. The the bad thing about this area, which makes it less likely, is you need a transformer station. Near to this type of land use.
Right.
And they gotta go all the way down Clark Road to get there.
You mean a substation?
Yeah, substation, for sure, yep. So and there's that one right by uh the schools in Meat Creek, so they'd have to come all the way down here. It's not an ideal scenario.
No.
It's not too far, you know, what what we talking about.
Has anything been brought to your attention?
No, I had a phone call from one of the, just full transparency and you know, they they contacted the public official, so you know, it's it's public record.
That's you?
Um, yeah, it's me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about five thousand feet. That's a far amount for conduit at at these rates, you know, that's expensive. Um. But the Wiswassers did call a while back, it's like two years ago and we're like. Hey, could we put solar there? And we're like, it depends. And so they were like, alright, well, there's some stuff going on in the state. We'll let you know if uh we we get interested. I'm like, sounds good.
So they said they would be interested possibly?
That's exact, they said, there's some stuff going on in the state, we'll let you know.
That's on.
And that's the last, that was like two years ago.
The north side of Clark Road, yeah.
Yeah, that's, they own this parcel, yeah, that's Steve's children, I think.
Is that the prob- probably they submitted a layout for a subdivision?
I don't know if they had, that would have been before my time.
Yeah, one time, Ray, they did talk to us about a subdivision. That was before us. Wiswassers owned it.
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a big par, it's a big parcel.
The 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 parcel that is no longer in Bath Township is the four twenty-five that I see is an obvious place.
What, side farm?
They could put an enormous uh solar farm there.
Well, I think they could down, that site I think does make more uh sense. I, if I was East Lansing, I would be ready for that.
Big time, yeah.
Yep. It's it's close to a high voltage line.
It is, I mean, it's it's absolutely, I've looked down for twenty years.
Because it's unstable land.
It is very, um, I have, I have some uh early plat maps that show that as quote. Um, tamarack swamp.
Well, it was.
It was.
Before the, all the drainage was put in, yeah.
So yeah, realistically, I'm not super worried about, that would be my recommendation, guys.
Parcel that cables own on uh. Would also be a possibility.
Where are they at?
Chandler Road. They're on Chandler Road.
They're up here?
Yep, that's one of the parcels. South of Clies.
Okay, they own that and they own this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, and that's that's really this, these Wiswasser parcels, they own both of these and the cables, that's that's the area where this could go. Again, they're far from a sub or transformer station, whatever you wanna call it. They've got three, does three-phase power come that far up, uh Chandler?
No.
I think it dies out.
Clark Road because we had to run it uh. And it goes on Slate Road.
Do they have three-phase power on Clark?
Yes, and on Slate as well.
Okay.
Cause we had to run Slate four eighty uh three-phase for the lift stations.
So they do have three-phase power, either way, they're gonna have to get some new uh conduit lines and to get this down to the substation, five thousand feet, that's far.
Yes, they'd have to feed it back to the substation and then back out on the grid.
From where I've seen the areas I toured of these, I mean, they're looking for substations across the street.
Pretty much, yeah. Well, it's expensive to build a substation.
Yeah, well, and then you gotta go get, you know, if the easements aren't in place and the utility isn't working with you, it's a lot of work too.
Yep, and they're expensive to maintain too.
So, okay, that's kind of, thank you Lexi on the planning commissions. I don't know if you guys, oh yeah. Last thing, um, I spoke with uh Chair Reich about this. We reached out and had a meeting with Eagle. They have a pilot program going on where they basically do what Lexi just did. But like a much more long-form version where they will come to the planning commission. Do like a forty-five minute presentation about everything of a a more in-depth level of what we discussed. Um, get thoughts from you guys, come back and present some options as they see it. And get more feedback and then they'll be out of here, but they will maintain them. As basically like consultants for us to run things by. This is at no cost to the township. It's purely informational, they won't push us in any direction. Um, I asked uh John if uh, you know. He thinks that this would be good for us to engage in this pilot program. They'd invite the public out and that would allow at cost to them. Invite the public out to that meeting, so you guys can hear from what they're thinking. Again, it's gonna be upfront that this is purely educational. There's no interest in, because we're not trying to rile up the whole township as I'm sure you could imagine people might get. Um, with the knowledge too that at the end of the day, local control has been lost, even if somebody goes through the Creo. At any point in time, if they aren't successful in that process, they can always opt into the state process. The Creo only require, if a Creo is established, it requires them to come to you guys first. But doesn't, doesn't mitigate the fact that they can go to the state at any given time, as I, as I understand it.
The consultants too are also like super data-driven, which we could also use that data and like future master plans and stuff, cause it's like. Um, what's your capability for renewable energy? What's your capability for blah, 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 blah?
Yeah, they're gonna talk in a much more detailed level about what I'm saying here, which is like, this is where this could possibly end up, which would be useful for us to know. So anyways, John thought it was a good idea, I think it's a good idea. There's no downside to it, it doesn't cost us anything, so. It's a pilot program. I know we'll even see if we're in the mix, cause we might not be the community profile they wanna work with. They might wanna work with the more rural community. So we'll see, we'll know uh later this month if they're coming out.
You said this is Eagle?
Eagle, yep.
So DEQ is what you're saying?
Yeah, 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 former Department of Environmental Quality, now a Department of Great Lakes.
Yeah, that'd be great, if they could come in and do a dog and pony for us.
Yeah, I thought so. I mean, what's the downside to us, you know? And then we're we're learning on the planning side, I mean, I'm no subject matter expert, this is all new, so information's power.
Right, and you're our expert, so we want you to be.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Okay, that's my spiel.
Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Yep.
I learned what a Creo is.
Sounds like it. You uh want us to reword it? On ordinance thirty-one sixty-two minus?
Oh, um, did you wanna cover the April eighth meeting?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I did, didn't I? Yes. Shouldn't read my own notes. Yeah, what's, what's the feeling about that?
Well, do you want, um, do you want me to explain the situation real quick?
Yeah, if you want to, that I think we can cover that.
So basically guys, uh what's going on is uh a- as John stated when he amended the agenda of the. Regular or Recreation Committee, um headed by Adam Montre, uh sent an email to myself and uh Chair Reich saying. Hey, uh we always love when we can get together, we've got some stuff in the works here. Um, some neighborhood plans that they've been working on, um. Uh some stuff on the Upton Road parcel that was discussed during uh the Parks and Recreation Plan that just got adopted. And they think there, this is would be an advantageous meeting for us, but from the planning commission, just open discussion between the two bodies. Um, so they said, would this body be interested in a joint meeting? So that's the question before you tonight. Because of the schedule of how we line up with them. They have a meeting on the eighth, we have one on the ninth right now on the schedule. It's a lot to do two nights in a row for everybody. Um, if they, if we were to try to in part go to them and they were trying to in part go to us. They're inviting us to their meeting on the eighth. Um, what I suggested to John. Was we cancel our meeting on the ninth to join them on the eighth.
Um, one thing I'd like to point out is I just ironically did some research on the RET Committee and their meetings. Last about twenty-seven minutes.
Really?
Yeah, so my suggestion would be to have them join us on the ninth.
Yeah, but that, that's the thing, then they have to sit through all our normal stuff.
If we can do them at the beginning, adjust our schedule.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's you guys' pleasure.
Put them at the head of the agenda, you know, if they wanna leave, you know, before we get into other minutia.
Would, I I was gonna say, would you like to just reschedule our meeting to the Monday and have them. Do their stuff at the beginning of the meeting and then they can leave and then we can have a planning meeting?
I can ask them if they'll come to the ninth. I think they just were saying that their meeting's easier, that way we don't have to, cause then we, they're again for us, like on staff. If we change our meeting to the eighth, then we have to announce like the paper at ninety-eight dollars that we're having a special meeting.
Yeah, and see that, I just think that would be a lot easier for us just to keep our schedule and have them join us, you know?
And but then they would wanna cancel their meeting on the eighth.
That's, they can do that.
Why don't you send out a feeler and see how how they feel about it?
Okay, alright.
Cause we got lots of time, it's.
Yeah, that's, it's, yeah, we've got several meetings to make a decision.
Yeah.
Um, okay, cool.
Just send out a flyer to through.
Yeah, I'll I'll just email Adam and say, hey, this is what they were thinking, what do you think?
Yeah. Thank you. Everybody okay with that? Any objections? No, okay, let's move on. Report from the planner, Miles.
Yeah.
You wanted to talk about the ordinance?
Yeah, I got two things. Um, so one. Well, I got two things on the agenda. One, I'll quickly say just so everyone has a reminder, our second meeting this month has been canceled. Because of the primary election, we would be in this room when an election would be happening, so obviously we can't do that.
Yeah, no, okay, so we are canceling it.
Yeah, it's it's already been canceled, um. So just be.
We could reschedule it if everybody thinks there's enough business that it warrants it.
On on my side, we, since it was canceled, we like have adjusted our planning to not happen. So if you do that, like I have nothing for you.
That's, that's the big thing, because you know.
That was easy.
No, we can do it, but we like, even with uh. Williams and Works, we've already said like you're on these dates in March and they've already planned for that, so.
That's good.
Alright, that's what's kinda hard about the agenda, like. We're coming up with the agenda on the fly, but then there's some planning that has to happen because of people with schedules.
Yep, sometimes.
Um, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, so on the ordinance side, uh. Mr. Sever here brought me an ordinance last time that was passed uh by the Planning Commission and the Board, but then wasn't a muting code. And I was like, oh, classic muting code, not doing what they're supposed to do. And so we looked into it and it turns out muting code did do what they were supposed to do. What happened was, I just wanted to make everyone aware of it and um. I put a copy of that ordinance here so you guys could see the language.
Oh.
So, this was passed during Nick's time. Um, the planner before me, yep.
Yeah.
And then Nick came up with uh the Site Plan um Review Standards. Um, this is ordinance uh thirty-one point sixty-two, I think the Site Plan Review Standards was like thirty-one point seven-two. So it was like a couple ordinances later. Um, it might even be in late sixties. It wasn't far behind. Nick then left and I came on board. That had already been on you guys' um radar a couple of times. So I didn't wanna break the chain and this is me not knowing, I'm coming in with not full information, I'm just trying to um keep things moving that were already moving. So we brought that ordinance in. When that ordinance amended the Site Plan Review Standards, it got rid of G. Now, substantively, it moved the responsibilities of G into other areas of the site plan. So it's not like this topic isn't covered, but if we prefer this language in G, I can always make a quick amendment and insert it back in.
You give me credit for bringing that, I didn't bring that to you.
No, I thought you did.
Somebody had it in somebody else.
It was Jason, okay.
My name's Jason, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't me.
Oh, that's right. So like, either way, my bad, okay.
He's like, well, thank you.
If that's a good thing, I did it.
Well, and that's, Jason probably is aware of this because he worked closest with Nick on this during his time. I know Jason and Nick were closely on.
He was on the planning commission at that time, yeah.
So he's probably like, what the, hey, what's going on? So anyways, that is the story behind that. Um. I think this is good language, it it could be included, it's just, you know, amendments happen over time, things get accidentally cut. But like I said, I think the responsibilities for what this is trying to accomplish just got moved into twenty-one point zero five.
I think so. I mean, it's not the same language.
It's not the same language, but the intent of it is there.
I think so.
So I'll, I guess I'll get with Jason then offline, cause I cannot be here tonight and just see what he thinks, but um.
Yeah, just give him the courtesy of, if you don't mind.
If he says like, hey, I wanna include it, I can get with you, John, and we can bring it back. It's, the language is already written, it's just, well, you could admit. One meeting, get this back in there if we need to.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the story behind that. And then uh John asked me to include Chair Reich uh the. Information for the transportation bonanza, which as we discussed earlier is a funny word. Um. They've called it that for like ten years now.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of an all-day event and this year, it's usually these things happen like in some downtown area, but it's happening at Eagle Eye. So good for us, um, I guess. Uh, if you gentlemen are. So, good for us, um, I guess, uh, if you gentlemen are interested, and some of the two of you are, I'm going to. Look up tomorrow what, if we can get, if we can get in. Is it, who is, so who's all interested by?
Show of hands?
Three, okay, alright, so I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow and see what's up. I might have to do this one where I register everybody on the fly and I'll just send you the info, I'm not gonna have enough time to get everyone. Their own information.
No, that's, no, that's alright.
Long as they know.
Yeah, Thursday, you have two days from now, which by the way, speaking of your own, did, did you get an email today, or ZBA? Are you, if you don't get one, and like, they emailed me today saying, you're signed up, you're registered, it's paid for, so, we paid for it. So if you don't get an email, let me know.
So now you gotta go.
Yeah, um, okay, that's it, that's all I got, thank you.
Looks like our public all left. And the Board of Trustees representative is not here, so anybody got any comments they'd like to share?
I have one question comment, you're aware of what's happening in Williamson, Williamson Township, the place it is.
With the two Dollar General and?
Yeah.
I am not.
They, they, they have a Dollar General or one of the Dollar Stores in Williamson right now, there's another one that wants to come. And, and the.
Classic Dollar General.
I got plenty of video about Dollar General.
Yeah, the, the, the problem apparently is, it kinda sounds to me, I didn't read the art, my wife read it too. It sounds like it's probably. Allowed by right. But the neighborhood, I mean, the township residents are really upset, they don't want one. Anyway, knowing we're in the same situation, we're in the same situation, anyway, they can get it so they can't come. They don't want another low-income store.
Well, first of all, on our side, I know for sure even the Dollar General down here was permitted by special use. So we, we wouldn't be in that situation.
That's good, yeah, because the, the problem is, they, they, their general price for, for products is less than a dollar and twenty-three cents. And it's like. We don't need that kinda store.
Yeah.
They don't either.
Yeah, it's interesting, I'm surprised the franchise even allowed it, but Dollar Generals, I mean, they're propagating like crazy.
There's thousands of them.
Yeah, they got a great business model.
But they're not making people happy.
No, they don't make people happy, and it, they're, they're really, the im- implementation of them is anywhere from like pretty good to like. It's a pole barn that looks like crap, so. As you go farther north in Michigan, you could, the quality gets worse and worse.
Less restrictions.
Yeah.
Less restrictions, yeah, that's. Well, there's actually, if, if anybody goes to Lanesburg on Woodbury Road, just south of Round Lake Road. There's a family Dollar and a Dollar General right across the street from each other. But they also have different products in a different market.
On the planning side, you know, with Dollar General, what they've tried to do, and like, on the planning side and on their business model, is they've tried to. Fill a niche where you have these communities that don't have the population density to support like Myers. But like, people still need to buy like sugar, and so they try. They, that's what they try to do, and they, they try to get into a lower demographic area, so, they've got their market studies.
My daughter-in-law managed one, was a district manager for him, it's a miserable world.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't had a good experience with working with their corporate branch, cause even ours down here, I've tried to get some things done. And it, they don't even know who owns it, I mean, it's crazy to me. We're like getting in town check, we're like, hey, who's your, who owns this property, they're like, I don't know, I'm like, who pays your salary, they're like, I don't know. Like, okay.
They must get a tax tape at the end of the year.
Yeah, but it's just, you know, it's like, uh, it's like a River Investment LLC, who's that?
It's the Shell game.
Yeah. So, anyways, yeah, I don't know what's going on, that sounds miserable. And it sounds like a, it sounds like a weird situation being, I'm not sure what they're gonna do, Williamson is absolutely beautiful community, so I'm sure they're in uproar.
Where do they wanna build it, Ray?
Someplace on Grand River. One is gonna be down by the tractor store down there.
Oh, by Tractor Supply?
Well, if I was their planner, and, uh, you know, I was getting feedback from my city council that this is just an absolute no-go, I think. You know, if, if you're in consultation with them.
I'm not.
But, well, if anybody's listening, let them know that their course of action would be to do a one-year moratorium on all retail shopping centers and then. Hurry up and, uh, end their zoning to zone it out, that, that'd be the move.
It was interesting, guys, Friday night, I had dinner in DeWitt, and it was. Our table mate, it was a gentleman off the East Lansing Planning. Just by random that they got seated next to us, and at Abbott and Lake Lansing, they wanna put in a strip mall. They have no tenants, it's not the one on the corner. It's the one to the west, the next lot.
It has to be, uh, northwest corner.
Northwest corner.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, they want right here?
Yes, yep.
What is that? They're actually, that's the corner they don't have, they would be just to the west of that. Before that road, um. They wanna put something in there, now they had. Yeah, it's a house.
Yeah.
And they're gonna tear it down.
What's, okay, so what's the problem?
Problem, it's going through this planning because they met all the checkpoints. But the city council is not gonna pass it.
Well, so that's dangerous though, so as we kinda just, if it's a use by right, and they mean all the checkpoints and you deny them. You can always do whatever you want, but it doesn't mean you're consequence free, they, they may, they may sue.
What are they gonna put there?
It's gonna be retail, uh, drive-through.
Drive?
Um, and again. The way it was described to me was, he has no idea, it's, the, they've got, uh, tobacco shop. That tobacco shop owner is the developer.
Okay.
So he's gonna put his own store in there.
It won't be a Rite Aid or a Walgreens, that's for sure.
I, I got another question, do you just go straight north on Abbott Road?
Yep.
Way up to, uh, State Road?
Oh, so, yep, I'll zoom out then. Okay. Where am I, I'm not, State Road, here we go, that's right there, yeah.
Yep, that building right there on Northwest Corner, let me know what that is, that's DeWitt Township.
I know exactly what that is.
What is it?
That's, uh, the, uh, storage facilities, uh. There's, no, no, directly south, the state, state road storage there.
Right.
That's owned by him. It's a completely climate-controlled, uh, workshop and, and the living area.
Really?
Yeah, it's.
We were wondering about that the other day, we drove by that and was like, this building is so.
Well, take a look at the, take a look at the, uh, at the time, it was cutting-edge solar, um, he had, even has solar vacuum tubes, which are. Were at the time really innovative for heating the air.
Nobody lives there though, right?
Excuse me?
Nobody lives there.
I don't, I don't know, there are almost always vehicles there, but, um.
We're wondering if it had anything to do with the golf course, cause if you look, there's a house in that, bunch of trees right there too. And I don't know, not that, no, you can't even see the house.
Okay.
And we're kinda wondering if that's where some of the workers that work at.
No, but the house, the house just to the west, Miles?
Yep.
To the west.
Yep.
That you can see that house right there to the west.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Go out.
You're talking further west?
Yeah, further west, see that house you can see right there? Go out.
Outside the canopy.
Here we go, now I don't have the mouse. On State Road, west.
Right there. There is one house. The third house to the west.
That one is, is their, their relatives and they own part of the place. The state storage.
State storage.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just. Um, and incidentally, pull it, yeah, pull it up a little bit more, see the green roof right there, the small green roof?
Oh, yep.
Right there, that is, like, has indoor hot tub and just.
Why?
Uh, cause it's like a bachelor's pad almost, I mean, it's, the guy's a millionaire, you know, that owns all that.
Well, we saw that they have some kind of, and this is why we were talking about it, because they have, they have, they definitely have a contract with the National Guard.
Oh, he's got tanks, he's got, uh.
Yes, he does.
He's got, uh, what do they call it, non-line of sight, uh.
This guy must be retired, he's gotta have some kinda, he's gotta be retired military.
Yeah, and I saw the gun outside, and I was like, what is that doing over here?
Yeah, I was surprised, you know, I saw that, I went, holy cow.
Yeah, well, Miles would be like, huh?
What kinda stuff do they store in there, that's such a climate-controlled?
Uh, that's for his own personal use, the climate-controlled area. Um, and it's a workshop too, they do all the, the maintenance people go over there and stuff, but, uh. Yeah, John, you know about it, don't you?
Oh, yes, yes, I do, yes, he has two British tanks that are operational.
He's driven it out there before, it sits way in the back in one of those Quonsets, that the tanks do, and they, he has other kind of military vehicles.
You can see him from the road.
Yeah, he's got some six-bys and Hummers and other kinds.
Are they his or they contracted?
Oh, no, they're his.
Oh, no, they're his.
Oh.
He collects them. I swear he had a Sherman tank too, I.
Yeah, I think he does, yeah.
You can see it, when you drive by, if you look close and look back there, you can see it, the tank.
Well, two of them are British, I know, because he's come to us to borrow Whitworth tools, and we finally gave him a supplier and then. I've made some parts for him that were Whitworth.
That's just crazy.
That house, we're just looking, way to the west there, it's got that pond behind it.
Yeah.
Does that pond ever flood their basement, I mean?
I don't think so.
You get heavy rains, that.
Oh, you're talking the pond on the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I just looked at it today and it's like, right at the bank.
Right up there, yeah.
Yeah, so I can't answer that, yeah, maybe they have a really good sump pump.
They must. Okay.
We got off track there a little bit.
I have, I have a, I have a question, I wanted to, Miles, if you could, um. Give a synopsis of the four twenty-five, not now, if I'm putting you on the spot, but if some, some point. Um, I had somebody ask me about the four twenty-five.
Yeah, I can give you.
And I really didn't have clear concise definition of what the four twenty-five was, when it.
Well, which one?
Yeah, there's a couple of them. So, that in itself.
Okay, so what, really quick, what a four twenty-five is, is, um, it. It's still within Clinton County, it's still within Bath Township, but we've basically, uh, given over our ability. For local control to the other unit, um, within the four twenty-five agreement, there's some tax imp- implications there. Um, so property taxes will go to them, but like whatever millage we have passed still is.
Some of it goes to us.
Yeah, so some goes to us, some goes to them, uh, right now, it, you know, actually it's easier if I go to, hold on here.
Well, it's, it's all, it's all of that sandy-looking area there, the Homish side farm.
Well, we also have one between Bath and DeWitt Township.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to the, um, zoning map, cause it'll better show it than batchwood, just give me a sec here.
So four twenty-five isn't, isn't specific to that area in Clinton County, it's, that's, that's a term?
It's a process, it's a process, it's a four twenty-five agreement, they're just like, you have a, I forget what it's called, but it's like a PA one. Sixty-two is, you sell away your development rights, I'm getting that number wrong for sure.
Yeah.
But you sell away your development rights, there's a series of agreements that all have these numbers assigned to them, uh, four twenty-five is. Uh, for municipalities to establish their agreement, so we have a four twenty-five with DeWitt going in here. Right, DeWitt Township, East Lansing, that's all this, that's that ocean of apartments that we have there. We have a. We have that.
Oh, 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 yeah, you're not, you're not over to.
Yeah, cause Chandler is the border of Bath Township, right? And that was largely established because we had the utility capacity at the time to develop that area. East Lansing and DeWitt Township had no interest in doing so, so, uh. Now, this four twenty-five, I'm not sure why the side farm went over into East Lansing, I have no idea.
Um, there was something to do with some students that had a problem with, with our fire trucks or our police getting over there. At a, you know, taking too long to get there, and so they said, we want East Lansing to service us, it was a big brouhaha.
Okay, so yeah, they have this, and then they got the side farm and whatever, and then East Lansing also not shown on this map, cause it's not, has nothing to do with us. East Lansing has another four twenty-five that comes up here into DeWitt Township.
Yep.
And that's how they got Eagle Eye and all that.
What is the, the white that's adjacent? I know that's, that's also.
This right here?
No, 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 over, over to the other side, yes.
Yep, that's just its own rule.
Okay.
It's just a weird zoning, how it's played out over time.
And what's the green behind the lake there?
That's public.
That's, so the green indicates public?
Yep.
Okay.
It's weird though, cause you'll notice some of those other areas aren't, are owned.
It's crazy, that's why, uh, I, I wanted to bring up also, John, I have done, I just sent it to, to, uh, Miles and Karen. The Polly Aqua Shores, um, you know, that's all owned by the township almost.
So I think the intention there, Ray, and the reason why this is green and maybe like everything on Outer Drive is not green, is because the. Intention here is for public use, just like the other buildings and areas for public use are green.
Right.
Where this is, you know, we, at some point, the township would like to get houses on those, I think should be the goal. Now, this, this parcel should probably be green though, that's just, that's just a mismatch, it hasn't been cleaned up over time.
Is that the something, something the township probably just took action on recently?
No, that's just how it's always been zoned, this is, this predates.
They did it on the north side.
Miles, you're talking about the, uh, the Clinton County parcel, I think is what Ray's talking about.
Oh, this?
Oh, no, one up.
Yep, this one, yeah, I, they didn't take action yet.
They're, they're not.
I don't, I don't wanna go into that all that.
No, let's go get into that tonight.
So, so to do with the four twenty-five, so the reason our sign that says welcome, their sign that says welcome to East Lansing. They are, they're technically any, like the one that's way up here, that's all East Lansing, yep. That's on that side, but it's inherently, but as the lay individual drives by, they probably see Haakah and they're like, man, East Lansing's doing it right. And they have no idea that's Bath Township. Now, they see Eagle Eye and they might associate that as well, but the layperson doesn't know, layperson sees that sign, and they think everything south of that is East Lansing.
Yep, that's correct.
But it's actually everything south on the west.
Just through one, just Eagle Eye and a couple other properties.
Only because of the four twenty-five.
Only because of four twenty-five.
How long does that agreement last, do you know?
The four twenty-fives are indefinite.
Okay.
They can be amended, it's not like it's forever, but there's no timeframe on expiring.
So, because of the four twenty-five, they can put the sign up there, and it's East Lansing?
Yeah, but it's, it's so weird that they did that, they just wanna capitalize on Eagle Eye, they want the credit for all that.
Yep.
Well, we're gonna discuss signs at some other time, so I'll save the rest of my comment for that time.
Cool, thanks, George.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is seconded, those concur, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.